Okay, I've got the hour of six o'clock is upon us. I'd like to open the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Thursday's August 28th, 2025 meeting. Open the meeting, if we can stand, call the order of Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, do we have any additions, deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, just real quick, I want to make sure, we don't have any additions or deletions, but I do want to see if the Deputy County Attorney Susan Prado can hear us and if we can hear her. Susan, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can y'all hear me?
We can hear you, I'm gonna go ahead and turn you back on mute and then just message or let me know if you need to unmute yourself.
Perfect, thank you.
Would it be appropriate that at this time if I had asked about a change in schedule of the public hearings?
What would you like to do?
I would like to flip A and B.
I would agree if they're here, just knowing the timeliness of it all.
I have no problem with that.
I don't have a problem.
I'm okay with it.
Good idea.
Good idea, do we need to take a roll call on that or is it just a?
Yeah, because we are amending the agenda, we do need an official motion and second.
Okay.
Motion to amend.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass as you ask, thank you. In doing that, we move on to item three, we have the approval of the minutes of June 26th, 2025. I can have a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Is it second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, carries unanimously, thank you. Second of the minutes, July 24th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
One question, I'm sorry. Under the number six planning matters, there was a discussion about a workshop, SPD procedures. Has that been scheduled or?
If I could get you to move closer to your microphone.
I'll move the microphone closer.
You got an email on that, Chip.
You did. I don't know, Ryan, are we connected, because I don't think I'm connected, but that's okay.
I can hear you through it.
Okay. It's me, am I hearing aids though? Okay.
Chip, so are you asking specifically about anything in the minutes?
No, I'm asking about the determinate of public hearing.
That meeting is tentatively scheduled for the second P&amp;Z meeting in October, however, that date has not been finalized, we will work towards finalizing that.
That's probably why I don't remember.
Hasn't happened yet.
Okay, thank you.
And with that.
We have a.
To approve the minutes.
Vote on the second.
The second.
Second for the minute.
Do we have, we had a second on the minute?
Yes, I got John is seconding.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, passage unanimously, thank you. And moving up to the item four is public hearings, we're gonna start with item B, which is Treasure Coast Detox, and this is quasi judicial, Treasure Coast Detox, its request for special exception use and site plan approval for a change of use from adult congregate living facility to residential treatment center, Treasure Coast Detox LLC applicant, Mills Shorten Associates LLC agent, zoning designation is CL, limited commercial, land use designation is CI, commercial industrial. At this point in time, do we have any declaration of ex parte?
No.
Okay, seeing none, if we could have all those who are gonna be speaking on this item, please stand and be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Brandon Krieger and our Chief of Current Development will be presenting this item.
All right, good evening Chair, members of the board, before you today is the Treasure Coast Detox Special Exception Use. You might have to click, it won't let me.
Okay, that's fine, I can advance for you.
All right.
Here we go.
All right, the property is located in between US Highway one and Old Dixie Highway, it has a zoning of CL Limited Commercial. On aerial, you can see an existing building with an existing stormwater pond and some existing parking onsite, so this is a use that is currently active on the property, it's an A, it's an adult congregate living facility with 29 beds. Taking a look at the site plan, it's gonna convert to a detox facility that is also going to be 29 beds, the only changes to this site is that they're adding four additional parking spaces to accommodate the use, so that's one of the special use land use criteria that they need to accommodate for, and there's gonna be a slight increase with their stormwater pond to also accommodate the additional four concrete parking spaces. Traffic circulation plan calls for two existing full access driveway connections to Old Dixie Highway, as I said, they're gonna make no changes to the parking lot except for four additional parking spaces, so the traffic circulation will remain the same as it does today. Stormwater plan calls for an extension to the already existing stormwater pond that you see highlighted in blue, it is a dry retention area. The only landscape changes are bringing the site up to code, to a 20-foot type A landscape buffer, that's gonna go along Old Dixie Highway, again, that is another item that is one of the special use land use criteria that they also need to meet. So as I said, no improvements are proposed or required for this project except for a parking lot and a stormwater area extension. Residential treatment centers in the limited commercial zoning district must adhere to the specific land use criteria in section 971.28 subsection six of our land development regulations. The proposed plans comply with all seven of the listed criteria, which are detailed and answered in your staff report tonight, those criteria generally revolve around interior living space, minimum parking standards, number of residents, and the facility location, and for the facility location, it has to meet minimum standards from being within a distance of another facility, and the closest facility to this would be in, I believe, St. Louis County, so it more than meets and exceeds the requirements. With that, staff recommends that the Plan and Zoning Commission recommend that, or recommends to the BCC that they grant the special exception approval for the Treasure Coast Detox Facility with the conditions listed in the staff report. The one lone condition is for the installation of the 20-foot type A landscape buffer with screen along Old Dixie Highway, and then obviously any other improvements that are indicated on the site plan like the four parking spaces and the extension to the stormwater pond. I'm available for any questions you may have, thank you.
I'll start on my left over here.
Interrupt one second.
Chris, yeah?
Also need to ask each member if they can be fair and apply the law and evidence they hear today and be fair in their decision before you go forward.
Of course.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. We'll start with, questions for staff, I'll start on my left, Mark, you have any questions?
Just curious, it says special exception use approval is required to change the use to residential treatment center, can you explain that?
So in our land development regulations, residential treatment centers and also ACLFs are special exception uses for this zoning district, so because they're converting from one item that requires special exception to another item that requires special exception, they have to go back through the process, because unfortunately, some of the criteria are a little bit different between both, so we have to treat them as two separate items, and they have to go through the board process just to make sure that they're gonna be able to meet those additional items, thank you. Thank you.
So you're saying that it's already been through the special exception once and been approved for that once, and now we're changing and have to do it again?
Yeah, it's just a use issue, that's all it is.
Yeah.
Any questions on my right, Chip?
Not this time.
Jordan?
No, sure.
Calvin?
John?
I think the only question I have, Brandon, and I think maybe it's just me, the type A buffer, what is the difference between a type A and a type B? If we said, you know, we want to have a little bit more vegetation and a little bit more landscape there, issue with that?
So as we go down the process, so type A, it would be the most strict between type A, B, C.
Right.
So usually it just amounts to the amount of shrubs and the amount of trees, but there actually is very, a very small difference, usually it's like a difference of five shrubs and maybe one extra tree. Yep.
I just, I feel that this is the bare minimum of landscaping and shrubs, I think if we can, I don't know, y'all make it a little bit better with.
But he said A being the most strict.
A is the highest.
A is the highest.
A is the highest, yes.
And that's all we, that's all we, okay, you answered my question then, geez, I thought we had Mullinex Ford coming and had, and we bumped them up to something that was a little bit different, okay, that's my bad. Yeah, they do have the Eagle, that made it different. All right, at this point in time, we'll open up for public comment. Anyone in the public wish to come and speak, if you do, please come to the podium and state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Wesley Mills, and Mills Shorten Associates were the engineers for the project and landscape architects, happy to just answer any questions that you may have tonight, also, the owners and operators are here tonight too, so if you had any questions from an operational standpoint, they're here to answer.
Any questions, y'all, to the right? My left? Okay, anyone else in the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Motion approved.
We have a motion, is it second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same, opposed? Same sign, passage unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the second public hearing, this is legislative. We'll give them a chance to clear out, even though I can't hear them. I don't know what we done different, but I, they're not, it's not coming through my hearing aids.
Mr. Louther, we, there's one additional section we need to leave.
I can't hear, so I'm glad I can't hear you. Okay, moving under item A, this is under public hearing, this is legislative, this is EAR based amendments, re-review of the 2025 evaluation and appraisal report, based amendments to the Indian River County Comprehensive Plan. So I guess at that point in time, we'll, I know there's public here, I guess we'll listen to staff first, I'll open up for public hearing and have them sworn in.
Mr. Louther?
Yes, Commissioner.
Ryan, if I could, I just had a comment and really a question, Ryan, as you know, I was not in attendance at the June 26th meeting, so I got this 222-page document for the first time on Friday, but I read it, I've read it, my question is, in reading this, and again, just a question, apparently P&amp;Z referred it on to the B OCC, they had a special session to address this, why is it being thrown back at us when everything I read in here is on their level, not ours, so why is it coming back?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, Calvin, just, you know, procedurally, that's what was requested by the board, that it be sent.
To buy time or? No, I'm just serious, it was clear that we sent it on and it's coming back, but it just says to re-review, re-review what? And my question is, are we here to deny, accept, amend, ratify, there's no direction there?
So, Mr. Reams, what I would submit is, one, John DeCannis, County Administrator, and I was at the meeting, and I would submit that the board has already made a recommendation, but there was concerns expressed by an individual or two that it kind of like breezed through and that there wasn't a really adequate discussion, and so the board thought in the best interest of the public is to bring it back and go through, and what we are proposing tonight is just go through, highlight some of the changes by element, and then you, and what I would suggest to the chair is you open, as you, we do each element, then you open it up, because what happened at the board meeting, our individuals came forward and provided comments that were really probably more germane or appropriate during one of the six public hearings or public workshops that were held, or when the 250 respondents for the survey, they could have provided those comments, rather than providing specific comments, we did have two members that provided specific comments on policies, we do, so with that being said, we're gonna come back, kind of go over it, go over some of the highlights, I'll, after, excuse me, after Patrick's, and I'll go over some of the comments that we've heard from the general public, as well as organizations, that will be passed on for the board's consideration.
Thank you, and that clears everything, I just wanted to know what I was looking for in watching the presentation.
Well, and I think to piggyback on that, correct me if I'm wrong, in this special call meeting with the B OCC, was it not a meeting that they were supposed to give their input and what they'd like to see added, changed, and moved, amended?
Yeah, it was, it was a special call meeting.
Correct, but they didn't.
For the purposes of them to approve and transmit the document to the state, the floor of commerce.
And they had public speak at that meeting, correct?
Yes, and there was some that expressed that it just breezed through, for lack of a better term, P&amp;Z, because it was a voluminous document.
And I, John, and I heard that come from one commissioner, and truthfully, I was here that night, I don't think we just breezed through it, I think staff gave a great presentation that needed to be moved to the next level, and the next level make the decision of what needs to be done as the reason they had a special call meeting, and I would have loved to have had input from each of their commissioners of what they wanted to see and what they wanted to hear, as opposed to us getting something back that doesn't have anything coming from the commissioners. So we're looking at the same document that we had last time, and I think what I would like to do as Chair is open it up to public, let public speak, and let them know, in my mind, commissioners, we're not gonna make any changes, we're gonna take it back to the B OCC, and they do what they're supposed to do.
If I may, really quick.
Go ahead, Susan, we can hear you.
Okay, so, sitting in on that, on that particular, because I sat in the audience on that meeting, Ms. Schuler, who sat in for me last time for this, for the year, mentioned that there were several comments about, excuse me, there not being enough time to review the packet in order for this board to make or feel like they made a, or able to make a recommendation, from my understanding of listening to the Board of County Commissioners meeting, that's why they wanted to come back, so you all, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, had the ability to actually dig into the documentation, to look at it, and to make your recommendation, so as far as the meeting, I just, and Mr. Chair, I understand you want to take the public comment, but I think we still need to keep in line with the legislative process and procedure, which would still be starting with staff doing their presentation, you know, you asking their questions, and then at the end of, you know, if public has something after that, then have the public come up and make their comment, but I think Ms. DeCannis mentions.
I have no problem with that.
Make sure we follow the rules, that's all.
I was at the county commission meeting, and I think there was a commissioner or two Board of County Commissioners that didn't feel they had enough time to review everything as well, as I understood it.
Well, and I'm not gonna get in a push, I'm not getting a push-pull, we're gonna let staff go ahead and present what they need to present, I don't think, when we, when we listen to this, there was a couple of comments that we might not have had enough time, but I think the majority of the board realized, no, we're okay with it, and that's why we voted on it. It, at this point in time, let's go ahead and just open it up to staff to give their report, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Patrick Murphy's gonna present the bulk of the presentation, but just to kind of recap what John had already laid out, Patrick's gonna highlight a couple of big picture items from the elements, John's going to address some specific feedback we've received, and then we will open it up to public comment, but we do recommend that when we open it up to public comment, that we take it element by element as needed, there may only be a few elements that we need to discuss, so with that, I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you, Ryan, good evening, members of the commission, Patrick Murphy, Chief of Long Range Planning, as was stated, this was originally presented to the commission on June 26th, where I gave an overview of what the year process is and what a comp plan is, and opened it up for public discussion, it was directed at the special call for me to bring this back to you and give you another opportunity to make sure that you digested it and had any comments heard, just to kind of recap, the community involvement in this process, back in March of 2023, the county initiated the RP process to contract with a consulting agency due to the enormous undertaking of evaluating over a thousand goals, objectives, and policies, Kim Lee Horn and Associates was selected, and the staff meetings began at that time, the public engagement that we took place was six workshops over three regions of the county, there was meetings in the North County Library, at this county commission chambers, and at the intergenerational center, it was a six meetings, and four of those were workshops and hybrid meetings, both in person and online, as well as providing the opportunity to attend in person via Zoom, and the online survey that was on the city's, county's website was also available at any given time. At these meetings, Kim Lee Horn and the county explained, staff explained the significance of the key plan elements and facilitated collaborative activities to seek input, so I'm gonna go over some of the significant changes, a lot of the changes in the year are to meet statutory requirements, is to consolidate policies that were interspersed throughout the comp plan, the original comp plan was written in 1990, and it was, it kind of got in the weeds where comp plan should be more policy, and you put your really dive-down type items in your LDRs, so some of the things were removed from the comp plan or proposed to and put in the land development regulations, where really where the rubber meets the road, but just to go over on the future land use element, some of the major items, planning staff discussed updating the RC Regional Commercial Future Land Use category with the Board of County Commissioners on September 10th, 2024, the board expressed their support to add the following uses to this category, multiple family residential up to eight units per acre, hotels and motels, and institutional uses such as schools, parks, places of worship, and cultural facilities, these uses are proposed for inclusion in the RC category. Policy 1.3.9 of future land use element is being stricken to remove restrictions that hamper the ability to develop 300 acres of land located west of Interstate 95 and south of State Route 60, this land is designated CI Future Land Use, and only a portion of the land has been developed since the policy was implemented in 2010 as the CVS Distribution Center, planning staff believe the CI designation and current parameters of the county's commercial zoning districts is sufficient in regulating development of this land. Also in the future land use element, policy 18.1 has been stricken as the criteria spelled out in this policy has been adopted in section 915.21 of the county's LDRs, thus, the policy has been achieved by incorporation into the zoning code, objective 18 will be revised to state, the county shall maintain LDR criteria for TND developments, and by 2045, 5% of new residential development, the dwelling units, occurring in unincorporated Indian River County will be in traditional neighborhood design projects. Moving to the next element that's listed in the comp plan is the sanitary sewer sub-element, the proposed amendments is to revise policy 1.6 to require connection to the county's sanitary sewer system when a septic tank fails and the property has sewer service available to it, the current policy as written may be interpreted to allow septic tank systems in rural areas in perpetuity, the current policy was written prior to the 2010 State Health Department sewer connection rules. Keeping in the sanitary sewer sub-element, the next two items, revised policy 5.3 on evaluation of sewer plant demands and potential expansion from the existing policy parameters to those established by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the current policy is outdated in its timelines. Policy 7.1 on the limitation of septic systems is being completely removed since these criteria have been moved into chapter 201 of the county's LDRs. The next element, potable water sub-element, the Indian River County Water Supply Plan discussion on page 28 of the potable water sub-element, which is on page 21 of your staff report, has been removed and replaced with a new water supply plan located in objective 10 of this sub-element. Potable water, policy 2.7 is a new policy being added, it states that the county's utilities department shall approve potable water concurrency for new projects only when adequate water supplies and facilities are available to accommodate the demands of the new development. Policy 4.11 of the potable element is also a new element, it's now gonna require that the county implement its water conservation plan associated with its consumptive use permit, this policy was recommended by the St. John's River Water Management District. Moving next to the solid waste sub-element, elimination of policy 2.3 on the regulations for disposal of septic haulers, since this activity is regulated by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, these are one of these ones where there is a higher authority, state agency. of these ones where there is a higher authority, a state agency that regulates this, and that's where it's better served than in our comp plan. We cannot put out legislation that supersedes the state. They sort of have the overlying legal reach. In the stormwater sub-element, policy 1.2, which establishes minimum finished floor elevations for structures in the special flood hazard area, has been revised to set all buildings above the 100-year storm event, along with the appropriate freeboard protections. These elevations will now be based on the latest flood insurance rate maps and governed by engineering studies specific to the subject property. Keeping in the stormwater sub-element, policy 1.5, which requires all major bridges to be designed to withstand a 100-year, three-day storm event, is being revised to include provisions for constructing bridges above the 100-year flood elevation, and is further regulated by the provisions of Section 952.08 of the county's LDRs. Policy 7.9 has added a requirement for the county to create and maintain an informational webpage, which provides educational materials on best management practices for agriculturally-exempt properties. This was added in cooperation with the Indian River County Water Conservation District. Moving into the transportation element, policy 1.5 strikes language outlining the specific parameters of a required traffic study, and instead references Chapter 952 of the county's LDRs, which includes the current traffic study requirements. Those requirements are actually much more than what was in the current policy. Policy 4.1 has added a requirement that the MPO Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan be updated every five years, and shall include a summary of bicycle and pedestrian improvements that have been implemented since the previous plan's updates. The next element in line is the housing sub-element. Policy 1.6 removes specific review times for development applications, as these timelines are codified in detail in Chapter 914 of the county's LDRs. Propose to add two new policies, 8.3 and 8.4, to assist with preservation of the county's historically significant housing and coordinates with the State Division of Historical Resources. Next up is conservation element. Policy 6.4, the specific analysis items that relate to the land acquisition process for obtaining ecologically valuable land have been removed and readdressed via the environmental bond referendum, which was covered in Resolution 22-016. Policy 7.3 on the protection of wetlands and deepwater habitat has been bolstered by the requirement of a specific permit from the county's environmental planning staff. Policy 7.8, beachfront lighting, has added requirements for lighting to be shielded and directed downward, and to include requirements for the lights to be specific light sources. In addition, the policy will now require beach-facing windows to be tinted. Also in the conservation element, policy 7.11 has been stricken, as the Committee for Sustainable Treasure Coast no longer exists. Policy 10.5, shoreline stabilization, is being strengthened to further protect sea turtle nesting habitat, enhance restoration and stabilization of sand dunes, and clarifies the use of rigid structural stabilization methods, for example, seawalls. Lastly, in the conservation element, policy 11.2 has added a requirement for certain regulated industries to submit annual reports to the State of Florida Emergency Response Commission and the county's Emergency Management Services staff for hazardous substances stored, used, or manufactured at a given site. Coastal Management Element, policies 2.1 and 2.2 have removed specific geographic areas of the county for the protection of shellfish propagation and harvesting and water quality standards associated with such activity, and instead refers to application of the Florida Administrative Code 62-302. This administrative code broadens the definitions of this activity, increases the areas of applicability in the county to these policies. We propose to add policy 2.13 as a new policy, which includes participation with the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, which is currently in the intergovernmental coordination element. The better proper location would be in the coastal management, as it deals with items in the coast. Policy 3.2 revises the boat facility siting zones by regulating them via the criteria in the county's Manatee Protection Plan. Policies 3.3 through 3.7 are being removed from this element and placed in the county's LDRs, which is the better place for housing it. Lastly, in the coastal management element, policies 4.12 and 4.13 are being added. They are to utilize local funds for beach renourishment and stabilization projects, and for coordination with state and federal agencies on funding such efforts. In the Recreation and Open Space element, Objective 9 and its following policies have been removed, as the Cultural Council of Indian River County no longer exist. Several other policies in the Recreation and Open Space element are being replaced with directives outlined in the county's Parks and Recreational Master Plan. There are no significant changes noted in the remaining elements of the comp plan, which are the intergovernmental coordination element, the public schools facilities element, or the property rights element. The EAR process timeline that we went over last time basically states that, once this board makes his recommendation, we will be scheduling this for the BCC on September 9, 2025. Once the BCC approves the staff to transmit this to the state, we'll have 10 days to actually transmit that, we have to have this to them no later than October 1, and for our comp plan to remain valid. There's also eight or nine state reviewing agencies listed here on this slide, of which I also have to send the same amendments to. They have a certain period of time where they can reply, reply back to me with their comments, very specific to just their areas, where Florida comments can comment on the entire document. Once the, I get this report back from the state and the state agencies, staff then will apply a response back to them, and then we'll schedule a final adoption hearing with BCC, and the EAR would actually then get adopted. Staff's recommendation is for the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the Comprehensive Plan EAR-based amendments, identify any additional needed changes, and recommend that the Board of County Commissioners transmit the county's Comprehensive Plan EAR-based amendments to Florida Department of Commerce for its review. As the county administrator stated before I begin, there are some public feedback that he has received that he'd like to kind of go over briefly with you, just to let everybody know what has been discussed.
And I'm generally going to just kind of identify the policy. So in the future land use element, Objective 1, there is currently proposed to strike by 2033 the overall residential density, the unincorporate portions of Indian River County within the urban service area will be 1.75 units per acre. I think the thought process is, it's kind of hard to regulate that, and not sure you can actually enforce it, given the actual density requirements, even at a low-density standpoint. That was one. We also have under, it would have been on page 10, future land use element, policy 1.38, number six, building heights. It's proposed to strike the actual residential structure shall be limited to a maximum of 35 feet, while non-residential mixture structures shall be limited to a maximum height of 50 feet. For all structures, architectural embellishments may exceed the maximum height limitation by more than 15 feet. However, what's being in its place is that building heights shall be identified in the land development regulations, subject to the provisions and/or incentives as may be adopted by the county in support of the policy. So the county's not scrapping, you know, as I think I've heard, or getting rid of building heights. It's just that they're going in the land development regulations, which is in a more appropriate location where they belong, and they already are in there as we speak right now.
John, real quick, that, and that is specific to the Newtown policy specifically.
Correct. There was concern expressed about policy 4.1 being deleted, which states land use districts, future land use element, policy 4.1, land use districts shall be located in manhood, contrite urban uses, thereby discouraging urban sprawl. It's redundant because it's referenced in other locations within the comprehensive plan. Policy 6.9 of the future land use element, which relates to allowing small-scale biofuel processing, like manufacturing, like plants and agricultural zoning, we did receive some language that would open that up. I mean, it's been a concern on how, you know, in terms of the preservation of agricultural lands and the incursion of residential development and opening up along potentially the corridors of Oslo or west of 95 and maybe west of 60, where we have CVS, and it butts right up to, that property butts up to agricultural land. It would give agricultural land, and it was more opportunity to get a return on their, on the land that they have, and not so quickly want to sell it for the purposes of residential development. So we'll be taking that, those policy recommendations, the actual comments to the board for their considerations. Policy 13.3, it's, there's concern, you know, the way it's been reworded, that the county's removing the requirement or the, its effort to continue on the inter-local service boundary agreements or joint planning areas. The county in the past, as this board knows, has worked diligently trying to come up with an ISBA with the city of Sebastian, and it never, it never materialized. So this policy just makes it, you know, the county shall continue to encourage municipalities to enter into inter-local service boundary agreements or joint planning area agreements to identify potential areas for annexation. What is being stricken is develop criteria for annexation decisions and execute interlocals with the county to formulate these criteria. What I would say is, Chapter 171 of the statutes covers what the annexation criteria are. So that would, you arguably have a policy here that is not valid, because Chapter 171 of Florida statutes governs the criteria and the process and procedures for annexing. There is also concern about Objective 17, in terms, excuse me, Objective 18, whereby it says by 2045, because we took out the timeframe that was there before, 5% of new residential development dwelling units occurring in unincorporated Indian River County will be in traditional neighborhood design projects. The real concern was everything that, you know, follows that, all the sub-policies related to the TND design standards. So we will be proposing to the county language to the effect that the county shall maintain and update the TND development regulations as appropriate. We're just trying to, again, remove or eliminate the TND development regulations, that they're just better served in our land development regulations, and that's where they currently are located.
Yeah, and John, I'd just like to also point out that all of that language that's being stricken is already included in Section 915.21 of LDRs, originally copied and pasted it into the LDRs a few years ago, so it doesn't really need to be in the comp plan anymore. It's in the LDRs. It's going nowhere.
Piggyback on that as well, if we were to want to change any of it, we would have to do a double change. We'd have to amend, under the current scenario, we'd have to change the comp plan and the LDRs, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
And the land development regulations are adopted by ordinance or requires two public hearings. Moving on to the sanitary sewer sub-element, policy 1.1, new development within, what was stricken was the unincorporated portion, and then it said municipalities of Indian River County shall be approved only when capacity is available, either onsite or offsite, to provide needed sanitary sewer service. We are going to probably propose to leave that as is and then strike the municipalities. Our comp plan should not govern what happens in a municipality, to be, to be fair. And then we will note, probably add a note to there, that the county currently, you know, it acquired the city of Sebastian's utility system, and we have an interlocal agreement, 1995 interlocal agreement, we'll reference that, and that we would, you know, be bound by, you know, the provisions to provide water and wastewater consistent with that agreement. So this is something the city of Sebastian expressed to us, and we agree with them. So we'll make that provision in there, just so we're noting that. We're going to abide by the ILA that we agreed to when we acquired it by defeating their debt.
Question, actually, if you don't mind.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, not at all.
For some of us are a little slower. Is there a way to reference which page you're talking about?
Yeah, I can just say, I'm sorry. Page 17, that's policy 1.1.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So on page 18, on the top, Objective 2, we kind of think the sentence has been updated and just kind of revised to be more, I think, correct, but it previously said by 2025, at least 60% of all existing units in the county's service area will be connected to the county's regional sanitary sewer. This will be an increase from 52.7% in 2017. It's recommended to be revised by 2045. The county will steadily increase the number of existing units connected to the county's regional sewer system with a long-range goal for 60% of all users to be connected. Some think by limiting it to 60%, we're limiting our ability, but I can tell you, you know, the utilities director here, and we, even when we met with Sebastian, Joint City-City Meeting, you mean, you're talking a billion dollars, you know, public investment to provide sanitary sewer throughout the entire county. And then there's another significant to a quarter to maybe half a billion, that could be private investment for the, for those that can't, the connection costs, the, the actual lines. So it's just probably not practical, and I think the 60% is a good benchmark. And, and we do have a study, and also the utilities is currently upgrading or updating, or actually developing, an integrated wastewater master plan that includes water, sanitary sewer, and reuse water. Reuse being for irrigation and stuff like that. So the point is, we think the 60% that was previously identified is appropriate, because we don't think going higher than that, I mean, if we do go higher than that and we're capable of doing it, we, of course, would do that, but we just know that's a huge public investment with the mandate that the board is facing, the county's facing by 2030 from the FDEP, in terms of, you know, everybody that can connect to a sanitary sewer available, they must connect. Otherwise, they must, you know, update their septic systems to the new enhanced nutrient-reduced, you know, septic system.
John, not to interrupt, but is there some reason why the 2030 deadline is not in here?
No, I mean, that's a mandate on us. And I'll tell you that I think a lot of people in the Indian River Lagoon, central Indian River Lagoon basin are probably lobbying to get that extended. We do think, again, we think it's about a half a billion dollars, you know, to a billion dollars of public investment, and that's going to be a pretty steep lift. You know, we currently have, you know, a report that Schultke did, I think it was in 17, that identified 37 priority areas, priority areas for those receiving water bodies, and we would want to focus our efforts on making sure that we could provide sanitary sewer to those areas first, and then look at other areas after that. So, so I think this exceeds beyond the, you know, it's 20-year planning timeframes, that's why it says 2045, but we still are bound by the 20, but statutorily, right now, we're bound by 2030, and that's why they are working on the Integrated Water Master Plan, and part of that will be the whole sanitary sewer. I mean, we've already had discussions where our capacity is right now between the two plants, and so we are working on that, that's what I can tell you.
John, wasn't there, wasn't there some state money pertaining to the ones on the lagoon?
Yeah, so we have been, we have been successful in acquiring, I think, is it up to five now, Sean? Four, four, four septic to sewer grants.
Okay.
But it, we have found they don't really cover all the costs.
Right.
And, and that's both from a public side and a private side. So, I mean, the mandate is a big lift, both publicly, public investment, and privately. So that's why we want to be strategic and judicious and focus on those, first and foremost, that would affect receiving water bodies in terms of any potential runoff, or, not runoff, but the nitrogen and the phosphorus that might come out of these septic systems, it's more nitrogen.
The reason you don't want to mention that in the plan is because you're expecting that it might change?
I think we all, a lot of us are hoping.
You're hoping.
Because that, or, you know, we've, we've had some frank conversations with legislative delegation, even about, talking about funding, and we've been told it's highly unlikely that you're going to see the legislature, you know, providing funding for private-side connections or even outside of the existing septic-to-sewer program.
Did they mention the legislative delegation, or the people you spoke to, saying anything about the chances of, of that, of the 2030 date changing?
In 2025, they say no, but we think as the public starts facing the realistic prospect of having to outlay $15,000 to $17,000, that's today's cost for the, generally speaking, for the new septic system. I think that's, there's going to be a lot of pressure on legislature to extend that timeframe. Now, we do have, we do have some mandates on us right now to establish a plan on how we're going to accomplish this. The question is, will we be able to accomplish it and have sufficient resources to fund this, you know, fully?
Okay, but you're saying that in your judgment, you don't want it included in the plan?
Well, we're not excluding it, I would say that. We're just providing that, we're going to still strive for 60% of users being connected, because the reality is, some are so far removed from a receiving water body, they may never, or removed from where existing utilities would be run. It would just be so cost-prohibitive, and so I don't think it's realistic to, you know, I mean, 60% is a goal, and if we can exceed that, that is excellent on behalf of the community.
Mr. Chair, John, if I could, also, and Chris or Susan, you might agree, we don't need to adopt state legislative directives in our comp plan.
Right.
Especially if we're expecting them to change, and we'd have to go back and change it. It's, the state's going to do their thing through the legislation.
Okay, understood.
Ryan, if I could, I agree with you 100%, but what I'm looking at is this entire EAR modification or recommendation is so vast, and the moving parts that are in it, my question would simply be... My question would simply be, if we have a new home buyer, first-time home buyer, buying a home tomorrow, if this were implemented tomorrow, is his cost of buying that home going up, or is it going down?
So, I mean, if...
Because I know in reading this, what I think...
Yeah, yeah. So if you, well, as of right now, anybody that builds a home that doesn't have, can't connect to central sewer, they have to put that new septic system in as of, as of actually of, I think it was July of last year.
Yes.
Trust me, I have it in there. And I think it's going to get more expensive as the demand goes up across the region, you know, in the next five years. So, but if they can connect to our sanitary sewer system, I mean, it's probably the investment to connect to that might be cheaper than actually the septic system.
It is, I mean, the septic systems went from 10 grand to 20 grand overnight, so there's a cost right there. But connecting to sewer is a better option. A, because the sewer impact fees, what, 2,500 bucks? As opposed to $10,000. And the fill dirt level is much lower for sewer than it is for septic.
And once you connect, you don't have to redo it.
But it's got to be available.
You know, speaking of that, I'm on 20th Avenue, we ever going to get you?
I'll note that for the board, sir. So on the same page, Objective 4, and this is just a clarification. It does say, you know, we're striking out, but I'll go right to the, a portion of it. But the county will work toward 100% of wastewater effluent produced by the county's centralized sewer facilities being reused. And we're talking reuse water. We are not talking, I want to be clear, we're not talking one water, we're not talking toilet-to-tap. And if necessary, we will make a clarification. I've had conversations with several people about this. We will clarify that it's not toilet-to-tap, I've also heard flush-to-faucet. I've heard some really charming descriptions of it. But we are talking about the reuse system that we'd use like in irrigation. You know, we encourage people, you know, to have a reuse system for irrigation, our medians. And then other, there's other uses, industrial uses for regular reuse water versus paying for potable water, so.
Is there not Health Department regulations on reuse water and what you can and can't do with it?
Well, there is, but there is a push among, you know, nationwide, I think there's some, and, you know, there's even, I think, Deval County's one here that are actually looking at that full cycle of one water. And we have actually met, our utility staff and myself have met with the commission. And we all acknowledge that we're not, we're not there. And I don't, you know, I don't, we're not, I don't think we're there, not just from the perception of the quality of the water, but also we still got a long way to go for our existing resources. You know, in 30 years, 40 years, maybe the county has to have this discussion, but they don't need to have it in 2025. Moving on to page 23. The new policy 2.7. The county utilities department shall approve potable water concurrency for new projects only when adequate water supplies and potable water facility are available to accommodate new development project demand. It's, this really should not be new, I mean, because this is a basic concurrency and, you know, management requirement. I mean, it's, we would have to sit down if we don't have the available capacity, meet with that developer, determine how, what we would have to do to get them capacity. But we're already required to operate and provide, concurrently have facilities available for development as it comes along, so.
And John, it's only new because it's being relocated from the current intergovernmental coordination element into this one.
It's not new, it's just new.
Just new to this element.
Question being, I mean, capacity and where we sit at this point in time versus where, I mean, how many units is that going to supply?
Sure, well, you know, I won't give you, I don't have the specifics, but what I can tell you is when we did the urban services boundary, and you think, I mean, they said there was maybe 17,000 units available in the unincorporated area that have some form of entitlement and could be approved for development. And they said we had sufficient enough capacity, both in land use, and also they looked at our water, and our water, and we had enough there to accommodate the projected population growth. I would tell you that the reason why I'm hesitant to give you specific numbers now, maybe when the utilities gets further down with their water master plan, maybe it'll be a great idea to come back here and give you an update. Because we are looking at, actually, you know, one of the things that we're looking at is the, right now, we say it's 250 gallons per day for a household, 250, right? And there's some that don't require that. So say it's, say the real, we're trying to get down to what is the real, what's the necessity, what's the actual amount needed? And say it's 200, that means every four houses is additional, or ERUs is an additional ERU available. So we're going to, we're evaluating that with our existing plant capacities. Utilities have been making a number of improvements that have enhanced capacity. And so we will update that and maybe schedule that for an update before this commission. Because clearly, water is one of the biggest, you know, is a significant tool by which, you know, how, to how much the county can grow in the future.
Well, I mean, when was the last time we built a water facility?
What's our oldest one?
I think the last time we expanded was 2008.
That's a long time ago.
So, just clarification, Policy 3.1, same page 23. I'm going to go to the last sentence, well, I'll just start, the county shall continue to use the upper Floridian aquifer as the primary water supply source. And then you go to the bottom, the last section, and employ nanofiltration as its preferred method for water treatment. That has nothing to do, because this is one of the ones, that's a one-water, that's a gateway to one-water. It is not. That is merely another treatment process like reverse osmosis. So that, and that's, the goal is, I think, Sean, aren't we almost already there? The nanofiltration?
Both of our plants are, I think, existing nanofiltration.
So it just, it's not about, I'm just trying, that word, for some reason, somebody has construed it as being a gateway to one, you know, the one-water, the toilet-to-tap, so I just want to clarify that. That was one of the ones that was brought to my attention. Next, page 25, we're two pages over.
Excuse me, John?
Yes, sir.
Going back to the top of 23. Policy 2.2 was scratched about the 10-year financing. What was the purpose of that?
I think it's already in our code, in our utilities program, is that correct?
Which one, I'm sorry?
The 10-year financing of utility improvements.
Up to 10-year financing for all utility assessments.
Two assessments.
I mean, that's how people got their county water, I mean, when it was being run way back when, because they just couldn't afford to pay them.
Top of page 23, Policy 2.2.
I just wondered why it was taken out.
2.2?
2.3.
I'm sorry.
Oh, 2.2, 2.2.
Top of page 23, Policy 2.2.
Yeah, that's for impact fees, if people need assistance with impact fees, they can finance it up to 10 years. And that's in county ordinance, it really says five years, but if they have financial hardship, they can finance it up to 10 years.
And that's in our existing code, correct?
It's in existing ordinance.
Yes.
It's just been taken out of the year then.
It's been taken out.
Yes.
Point is, it's been taken out of here.
Because this is a policy document, and you already have that, that's already in codified via an ordinance.
Okay.
It is also covered in 2.1, if you really think about it.
Yeah, good point, 2.1, it still, it still does say the utilities department servicer and offer up to 10-year financing for all utility assessments. So it's also, it's just a duplication.
It's just repetitious.
What's that?
It's repetitious.
Yes.
Well, there's two different things, the financing and the ordinance associated with impact fees.
Yeah, Sean, if we can, yeah.
Sean Leesky, Utilities Director, there's two different issues at hand. The impact fees and financing and the ordinance are associated with impact fees. This is actually associated with assessments. And assessments are done when, when we're, and the residential community is having to fund the infrastructure, and we issue an assessment, that assessment can then be financed for 10 years. So it probably still needs to be, to remain in here that way.
So moving to page 25. And this is middle bottom of the page, Objective 8. The county will...
I'm sorry, again.
Page 25, Objective 8.
Backing up to 23. Policy 4.8. I read that as more, it's talking about affluent reuse. And I thought maybe that should have been in, 4.8 should have been in septic sewer as opposed to potable water.
That's a great, that's a great comment, thank you.
We can move it to sanitary.
Thank you.
John, you were going to go to 25?
Yeah, 25, Objective 8. It had a date in there, by 2026, the county will utilize. So now it just says the county will develop alternative water supply sources in addition to upper Floridian aquifer system. Again, I know that brings up the issue, you know, an alternative water source could be one-water, but it also could be a desalinization plant, it could be a reservoir, you know, so, surface water. So it just, you know, you could be taking out of St. John's, or, you know, there's other, I mean, just go up into Brevard, they're going to be taking out, you know, water out of the St. John's at 520, you know, almost probably about 35, maybe 40 million gallons a day, you know, that's going to serve central Florida. So it's just, there's other water sources out there. And so the point being is, we want to make sure we're using that, and as well as other technologies come along. And, but it's not, again, it's not one-water. There's no intent for one-water.
Above that, in 6.2, you scratched that, and you said it was addressed in Policy 6.3. There is no 6.3.
It's a good point, and I'm glad, Mr. Chair, and for the benefit of all the commissioners, we're only changing or showing changes, policies or objectives that change. Anything that has not changed is not actually in this document, otherwise it'd be about three times the size. So 6.3 is still in the comp plan, it's just not...
Ah, okay.
So if you see references to policies or objectives, and then you don't see those policies or objectives, they are still there. We just, if we would have included them, it would have been three times as long.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So Policy 8.1, again, the county will conduct feasibility studies and assessments of potential alternative water sources. The county will continually evaluate its source water aquifer to mitigate impacts to ELUs through expansion, that's the existing lawful uses. It's just, it's just expanding on what was already there. By 2015, the county shall study and identify viable alternative water sources. This actually, you know, in part, through the Integrated Water Master Plan, they're already going to, they're going to be doing some of that, or as we speak. Policy 8.2, it had a timeline by 2020. And now it says the county shall obtain all necessary permits to construct the associated infrastructure related to alternative water support facilities. The county shall incorporate potential alternative water supplier projects in the five-year CIP. And that's standard policy that we would do, that we put into the CIP already, so we're following what we do. Objective 9, I will go through this, but it does eliminate some of the timeframes, because we've already actually completed these. And actually, this is going to be proposed to be stricken in its entirety as it's presented to the board, because we've done this.
Now on the top of page 26, by the way.
Yes, page 26, Objective 9. It's already, they've already, that's what the policies, policies, by this year, we're going to do this. Well, we've done that. So in this case, this should be stricken. And I only have a couple more, Mr. Chair members. Moving to the natural groundwater sub-element, page 31. Policy 1.7. The county will promote beneficial reuse of treated wastewater to maximize to the extent feasible to minimize or avoid the need for disposal via injection wells. Again, if we can increase our reuse system, one, I mean, you can, people could stop using potable water to water their lawns, and they could do it via reuse system. So I mean, it's just, we're going to make efforts to try to expand that. And it does say to the maximum extent feasible to minimize or avoid the need. And then on the next page, page 32. Policy 2.6, by 2011, the county will conduct, contact the US Geological Survey and request an updated countywide geo- or hydrological survey. There has been some desire for this to occur. It does say updated policy there. At the end of the day, I think, you know, in general, this is a function of the St. John's Water Management District. They manage the water resources within the district. They approve consumptive use permits, and they monitor the amount of water that's available to ensure that we're not bleeding, you know, our water resources. So it's, I know this is important to some, but it's also, it's really a St. John's River Water Management District function. And I think we're coming to the end. So on page 37. And this is of the stormwater sub-element. And this, in Policy 7.9, smack dab in the middle, that passed the strike-throughs. It says BNP shall be in accordance with FDA's Florida Department of Agriculture/Consumer Services, NRCS, St. John's Water Management, and other BNP Best Management Practice Manual as allowed by FTA. Indian River, we're going to strike this next sentence. Indian River County property providers shall provide this material to all agricultural exempt properties at the time of application or renewal. But it does, we're still going to provide it, we are, in terms of it's going to be available. The county shall create a single webpage providing education directly to agriculturally exempt properties. Which is so, it's in fairness to the property providers, it's not fair to put another responsibility on him when we can use their webpage and promote that as well. And with that, those were the main ones, I don't have, I mean, just verify, because I dog-eared everyone that sends you get into conservation. So with that, Mr. Chair, we can return to the board, and we would just ask that you go, you know, element by element, and just ask, you know, open it up to the public and say, do you have any comments on policies that were not, that are in here, or that were not included, or whatever the case might be?
And I have no problem with that. The last time we had NEAR done was, what, 2008?
Yeah, that is correct.
I got a couple of questions for you. Back to the start there on Objective 1. It talks about overall low density as our agenda, but we took the metric out. So what does it mean now, and how are we supposed to do our job?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Campbell, so what John touched on early on was that 1.75 unit per acre is difficult to achieve twofold. One, because it's, you know, how, we can't not approve a development and say, wait a minute, you bring the average up, and then the next development brings the average down. So to have a specific unit per acre measurement, I don't think is legally enforceable. We do have, by and large, three units per acre and six units per acre. But to specify a specific density and call out an average, that's a moving target constantly.
And I would also submit that we want to be mindful, the legislature, we've adopted one appropriate rights element. There are certain rights that a property owner has with reasonable expectations for their investment. And, I mean, matter of fact, this passed legislative sessions, Senate Bill 180 was passed. And even though we will be sending all these up, we will not, if any of these are deemed more restrictive or more burdensome, the state will let us know, we will not have, we will not be able to adopt them. Because, you know, in the aftermath of the hurricanes and wiping out some communities, you know, maybe they adopted, as they, oh, they saw it as an opportunity to, when the rebuilding comes in, let's require more. You know, and how is that fair to the property owner, the homeowner? And so therefore, they said, listen, you can't touch your comp plan for anything that's more restrictive or more burdensome until October 1st of 2027, for the 24 storms. Any storms going forward, for one year after the storm hits, if you're within 100 miles of that, of that path, you're not able to do it.
Along those same lines, at some point in there, I thought I saw that we are saying we are going to maintain so many acres, I think the number was 125,000 acres of ag land through a time period, is that correct?
I do believe that is correct.
Right, so how do we monitor that as well? Do we have any idea where we are?
You know, we talked about the one policy related to opening up ag lands, expanding some of the uses that are in ag land that already exist, that one policy, I think it's 6.9. And, but we didn't want to do it, because the discussion came up after we were too far along on this. But we probably will be coming back after this is done and looking, it's the same that we're going to do with the economic development element, because we have the Economic Development Strategic Action Plan, looking at maybe an agriculture-industrial future land use category to... to create opportunities to preserve, to one, to preserve ag land. So, but so you can preserve it, but also use it in a mixed use component, you know, at least ag and something like, you know, some light industrial or something related to critical infrastructure or something like that.
Okay. And then lastly, I can stitch it, just kinda wanna know, is there any protection anywhere for water, for, for ag use? For animals, for cattle, for anything? I don't see any.
That's the effect, that was the ELU policy.
Existing land uses, yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
John, let me ask you this. When this gets passed and it goes to the state, does the county at any given time have the opportunity to change something there?
So the state will send us back and what they call an objections, recommendation, comment report, or report. And at that time, if they have objections, we get the opportunity to respond to those objections. Either we can, the board can say, no, we're good. And no, this is right. And the board say, we'll go to a DOA hearing, Division of Administrative Hearing, and you do that. Or you make adjustments to, in response to one of maybe the reviewing agencies that might have raised an objection. Or there maybe there's a recommendation and there's a comment. But the board is still not limited to just those things that they send up. If we subsequently come back and see like, well, you know, when we look at this and on the second review, we need to do this. Because they're gonna review the adoption, when they do the adoption hearing, it gets sent back up to the state. It's just a more expedited review at that point.
And if I remember right, the CVS, when it was built, and an industrial park was built, it was stipulated on a certain longitude and latitude that can be built there. Nothing else can come along as an industrial park along that way. So it was specific to that property. And of course, I'm going back a lot of years, but I know that was a big issue back in the time that that was done.
I think from an economic development standpoint, it's a big issue today. Because you have land that's, you know, arguably identified for industrial use.
Right.
And I know we've met with some industrial developers and others that are looking, you know, what they could potentially do to bring, you know, value-added jobs to our community. And we're talking about trying to bring back future generations. They go to college, they come back, they get a good paying job. And so by to, this land out there that's designated for this commercial industrial, and we should be making sure that there's not impediments, you know? I mean, again, you can manage growth, which you can still actually, you know, in this case, you have land that's designated. And I think Patrick mentioned it earlier in his presentation about that specific, you know, area along West State Route 60.
And that was done just for that reason, because you had 60 that goes to the turnpike, that goes to Tampa. And I'm just amazed.
It had all the geographical benefits and amenities of location. And it's, 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 it's interesting.
Right, Mr. Chair, so the way that kinda got rolled out was because there was a huge jump from A1 or A2, whatever it was, to CI. They said, hey, wait a minute, we're gonna put some very tight controls as to what they can actually do. Because if you just say CI, then you can do a whole host of things. So they, it was a very controlled measure. However, here we are 15 years later and we've only got one user that's come out of the ground. We have the stipulations in place that, that need to be there.
And Ryan, the only reason I said that, I had someone ask me here a while back about the mall. You know, they're wanting to come in and go an extra story for a hotel or.
To be very clear, the height stuff did not get included.
Well, and I'm going, okay, why can't you just designate that? It's that one spot and away you go. It can't be anywhere else. But it's, that's for different.
To your point, the last conversation the board had when the, he wasn't an applicant at the time, but the property owner came and asked the board if they were supportive, they mentioned, the conversation was, well, as long as there's potentially a public benefit, come back with a proposal. And that's the, if you incentivize it for that one additional height or whatever it is, one additional floor, that might be the way. Because that's a large property and that will become, it'll only continue to.
To be clear, the uses that were contemplated during that same discussion are being included in the RC through this process.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So I guess what we need to do then is open up a public hearing and let the public speak on anything they wanna speak on.
Yes.
Just go from there. Any more questions, commissioners?
Touch on the, on the building heights again. You mentioned it prior, but just the subject to the provisions and/or incentives as may be adopted by the county in support of this policy. Are the height limitations still dead fast in the LDRs? And are we, are we, you know, leaving some leeway to get away from the 25-foot residential and 50-foot mixed use?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Stewart, no, they are still, as they exactly are in the LDRs. The thought is that there may be the ability within Newtown that they could potentially, and I'm not, I don't think we're gonna exceed the height. What could, what could occur is, you know, for affordable housing or for some other measure, it won't exceed the cap, but it could be some of the, where it would otherwise be limited. They can go to the cap if that makes sense. But we are not, again, we're not removing the height limitations throughout the code. This is specific to incentives or other unique, and again, specific to Newtown.
And it does, but it does provide, to your, to your point, the opportunity for the board to make, and they would have to change the ordinance to make an incentive-based, you know, decision if it's in the public's interest. It doesn't guarantee, it doesn't entitle anybody, but it provides the opportunity, if the incentive was significant enough to the public, that maybe, because like we see at the mall, you know, maybe if they move things further, you know, or come not to the rear of the property, the residential, you have the single family, move the, move that stuff more front-facing where State Route 60 is or close to it, maybe that's appropriate.
Chip, any more questions?
Actually, it was part of the process, though. You were gonna open it up to the public, but I heard some discussions about going element by element.
It would just make it easier for us to document notes if we just went element by element.
And then the public can come up at that point in time if they have a concern about that particular element. Is that what we're talking about?
If y'all wanna do that, I have no problem with that. Absolutely. Mark, did you have a question?
Yes, I had a general question. A lot of the stuff that was taken out of here was because it was moved to the LDRs. Can you explain if the LDRs have equal strength for our purposes to the comp plan?
They are, by all means, equally, if not greater. They're much more defined. Yeah, much greater, I would think.
I mean, the comp plan is the underlying, if you will, constitution of the land. And the LDRs are the laws that govern the use of land. They regulate.
The LDRs don't go to the state and this does, correct?
That, that's true, but I would submit, you still have to be consistent with both.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
For our purposes, they're equal.
Then what, what we'll do is open this up for public hearing. And at that point in time, we'll start with element by element. And if the public wants to speak on that, we'll have them come up and speak on that. So we'll go ahead and open up public hearing. Element.
First, the first element is the future land use element.
Yep. Could you state your name and address, please?
Good evening, Chairman. My name is Daniel Sorrow with Mills Short and Associate. I am the land planner and landscape architecture director for the company. And thank you, pleased to be here this evening, Commissioner. And really, I want to thank staff for the hard work that they've done on this year amendment over the last year and a half or so. A lot of thought and effort has gone into it with the public meetings and the shreds and the feedback from the residents and the county staff. And, you know, we're grateful for the work that's been done to date. I've probably processed at least a dozen or so of these text amendments throughout my 20-year career. Very, very common for applicants and developers and property owners to submit text amendments to the local municipality. I've worked all over the Treasure Coast. It's surprising to me to hear that, you know, the last one here was done back in 2008 because these are documents that are living and breathing and they do, they do change over time. So I thank the Board of County Commissioners for sending this back to Planning and Zoning Board so that you could get some more public comment and more feedback from the residents and then have it go through the process of transmittal. As I think Mr. Kriegen or Mr. Sweeney mentioned, does go through multi-agency reviews at Tallahassee. The Department of Commerce, St. John's, you get the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. You get the county local municipalities also comment. So you get a lot of feedback from different agencies and different review staff. Then comes back and the Board of County Commissioners has the ultimate decision, as Mr. DeConich said, to accept policy, to deny policy, to objectives. And they're the decision maker and how, well, really the citizens are, but how the county does move forward in the next seven years or so. And I, I just wanted to make a clarification or ask for clarification because I think I heard that the public comment that has been submitted to staff in this past week was gonna be forwarded for consideration to the Board of County Commissioners at their transmittal hearing. And if not, just wanted to, to reserve a little bit more time to add some public comment. But was that correct, Mr. DeConich?
Yes, that is correct. They've received individuals, they've received letters from several stakeholder groups. And we will be presenting all the ones that have come forward to the, to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you very much. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like speak on this item?
Hi, my name is Bob Bruce. I live at 12396 Highway 18. I represent three of your former planning and zoning commissioners. That would be me, Donna Keys, and George Hamner, and indirectly, Dan Ritchie. We went through the 2008 process. It was quite different than this one. Planning and zoning was totally involved with 2008. That didn't happen this time around. And we're kinda worried about that. We're worried about unintended consequences of these changes. I note here in the memo that went with this package, it says, to date, there have been no changes. And here you're being presented with a huge number of changes that were not documented in this package. Think about that. Thank you for your time.
Bob, one question. Having been a former county commissioner, as you former planning and zoning board member, again, I stated earlier that this was a special call meeting to the Board of County Commissioners. They had all day to give an opportunity to listen to exactly what we listened to, voice their opinion, ask questions, submit those, and send that back to us where we would have an opportunity to see what they're looking for, what they want, changes that they see. And we didn't get it. I'm just saying, as a former county commissioner, you're correct. It's not the same.
It's radically different. Did any of you know any of this stuff that Mr. Titanic presented today ahead of time?
No, sir.
No.
Okay. I guess I rest my case.
Appreciate that.
Will all the changes that John talked about be submitted to the BCC?
Correct, but these are merely.
They'll get a new package with.
No, no, these are only suggestions because some of them are going to be changed and some of them more likely will not. This is all feedback we've received in about a seven-day period. It's impossible to account for these things on a, on a live basis, but the format will be the same.
Yeah, I provided you an overview of what comments we've received.
Right.
It wasn't, there was no direct changes recommended, other than telling you like, I think, nine, that we were gonna delete that, you know, that.
We were gonna recommend that it be deleted.
Recommend it be deleted.
I guess my question, Bob, when you went through this in 2008.
We were heavily involved.
Yeah. And it was a tedious process from the standpoint of dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Long time, yes.
Why have we not done that on this one?
I don't know. That's a good question.
I guess, you know, you could go back and the reason probably it wasn't done in 2015. In 2011, then Governor Scott, you know, they revamped the growth management bill. They eliminated 9J5, which is a section of the administrative code for the state. And so some of the policies, the procedures and the things that you were required to do back then, you're not, you weren't in 2011. My understanding is in 2015, because this is usually every seven years you evaluate your, your comp plan. You got to send, if you thought you were good, you could send a letter to the Florida Commerce saying, we don't see any local issues that's needing to be addressed, and then you didn't have to evaluate it. Since it'd been so long, the decision was made in 22, and then they got a consultant on in 23 to do this. And what I would say to you is, because I know that the comment was, well, they, we did it at one time, both the comp plan and the LDRs. And I don't think you can really do that personally, and I have been through these with other jurisdictions, is that you need to do your comprehensive plan first and then you update your land development regulations. It just, a lot of those, some of the process and the procedures that existed before that were mandated when it was under the Department of Community Affairs no longer exist. The responsibility from the, for the evaluation of this as it goes to Tallahassee, it used to be, it went from the Department of Community Affairs to the Department of Economic Opportunity. And now it's with Florida Commerce. So the state has changed what arguably some may say, you know, the, the growth management bills that existed back in the eighties that required comprehensive plan are not the same today.
Let me ask you this, John. I think the last time we've changed the LDRs was 2004?
I mean, we've changed the LDRs every.
But I mean, I mean, that was the biggest move.
Sure, sure. And that was in response to the.
And we're still using the South County Initiative that was done in 2004.
That is not codified, but it is in place.
Wait, wait, wait. It was, that was GAC, the Growth Awareness Council.
Yeah.
We can call it South County Initiative.
Well, there's, no, 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 there's, there's a portion of that, Bob, because you know, I know the Growth Awareness Committee.
I guess our point is the four of us are worried about unintended consequences.
I guess my question is to reach out to your commissioner and make sure you show up at their meeting like you did with ours?
Yep, I'm sure I will.
And I think that's why they wanted it to be sent back to us without their comments, I guess.
I, I think there was a concern that planning and zoning was not really involved in this process.
Well, we weren't. I don't think Beach and Shore's been involved.
Nope.
I don't think Economic Development Committee, but I'm not answering for staff.
But you hear what I'm saying.
I do. And I appreciate the comment.
Okay. You have four very long time planning and zoning people that are very concerned.
No, absolutely. Appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Chairman, again, Dan Sorrow with Mills Short and Associate. I just wanted to point a clarification because I thought, I heard Mr. DeConich say that the public comment that was provided during the week was going to be forwarded to the county commission for review. And then I think I heard Mr. Sweeney say, well, there's no way they're getting too much public comment to transmit everything. So just to confirm, there was a letter sent to, to the staff on August 26, 2025. Will that letter be transmitted to?
Yes, already has been.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, what I, what the purpose of the cover memo was intended to try to clarify was that what was presented to you all on June 26 and then also to the BCC, the strike through underlying the 82 page, there has been no, no change to that whatsoever. Since that time, we have received comments, concerns. We are, we are considering some additional changes. However, we have not made any of those physically because it's ultimately up to the board to decide, yes, we are gonna strike that, no, we're gonna leave that as is. That's what I'm getting.
It fundamentally would be unfair to, and I think inappropriate to make a change at this point since that, this document's been out on the website and you all have had a chance once before and the board. So we are bringing forth, like, you know, the RNA provided a letter, we've identified, you know, we've spoke with the City of Sebastian, got a letter from Pelican Audubon Society. Would you have a letter from Mr., from Wesley Mills, Wesley Short, Mills and Short, sorry, Wesley? And so any of those comments, and even some of the board members have received comments because they've, you know, individually have asked us if somebody has met with them and to give us a heads up so we can keep track of the comments that they're receiving. So the point is, we're gonna bring the same document that everybody's been looking at and then present what, similar to what I tried to do to you, is give you an overview of what others have expressed, whether it be an organization or individual.
Right. And I still, and I wanna make sure I. And I still, and I want to make sure I am correct on that, as all this gets passed, however it's changed or molded and washed, the BOCC still has the capability of changing something that might not fit that after it's been approved. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, that's another very good, valid point. Back in the old process, comp plan amendments were limited to only two times a year, and then they went to a four-time a year. There's no longer windows. We can revisit the comp plan at any time.
Okay.
However, if we don't transmit these amendments by October 1, we are frozen, and we can't make any changes under these amendments or any other proposals.
Well, and I think the most important thing is to realize the plan it has submitted can be changed.
Correct. Absolutely. That is-
I would like to make a comment about that. We are not frozen. We could be frozen.
Correct.
Please state it correctly.
Yeah. And I think with, hopefully, the history of Indian River County, it's, we've been pretty strong on what we do and how we do. So I appreciate that, Bob.
Well, the question being, the comments from the public that will be presented or whatnot, and that there may be a acceptance by the commission to work that in, but it's going to have to be done after this plan, correct?
That's correct.
Or as part of their approval for the transmittal hearing.
And I think they believe that they're going to have a long meeting, if I remember right. They're trying, John, they were trying to have you schedule this to where it was going to be an easy day that they had, which-
Regarding the approval of the transmission, so if that, I just want to be clear, if there's something that comes up, it's not going to be decided on at that county commission meeting until it comes back through here after the submission.
We're done tonight.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
We're done tonight.
Yeah, so it's, they ultimately retain the authority to make changes as the governing body.
Yep.
And so, I mean, you could recommend one thing, and then they could do another, but we just wanted to make sure you were aware of what we were hearing in terms of the comments that have been submitted thus far.
Right.
And that it will also be relayed to, reiterated at our presentation before the Board of County Commission.
So when that happens, if somebody comes up with a great idea, it can be incorporated at that point in time?
That's the purpose for the hearings, yes.
Right of the board is on board.
If they'd like.
Chip, that's why I was hoping to get some of their comments back to this meeting, and we didn't. They just wanted it to come directly to us, and that's okay. All right, moving on. Let's see, I've lost my place.
Senator Sewer.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to take a stab at the group that's here on this side. Do you all have any other elements that you want to speak to?
Any specific elements that you all want to come to the podium and talk about?
Yeah, I believe it was that was the-
Bob, you do?
Yes. Yeah, we can follow it through. I just don't want to go through every element.
I agree. I agree.
I want to understand this zone, page 17, Senator Sewer's sub-element. And John had addressed this policy 1.1. I'd like to understand what transpired there, why this started this way, why it got supposedly changed, maybe? What's going on here?
So I-
I mean, there's no comment here at all.
Yes. Yeah, I understand. And when I read the policy and, you know, with the city manager of Sebastian, because it was a concern they raised, I think it was a concern came from others as well, is when you read it, it's, I think we're stepping outside our authority because we're saying, "New development within the municipalities of Indian River County shall be approved only when capacity is available, either on-site or off-site, to provide needed sanitary sewer service."
Right.
Well, but the reality is, our comp plan is only related to lands in the unincorporated area. So I think there was a conversation, you know, I know the issues as it relates to the joint planning agreements, you know, trying to get that, that has never materialized. And the note that would go with this, if you recall, I mentioned, would be, yes, I know the Graves property is one that comes to mind, but they, if you think of that, I think this might apply there, but if you think of it, that particular parcel, when the City of Sebastian approved it, they approved it subject to certain conditions in their comprehensive plan, and they applied it as the approval. And then with us, we have an inter-local agreement with the City of Sebastian as it relates to the provision of sewer water, 1995 ILA. And so we still have to, you know, we have to abide by that agreement. And it not just requires us to plan, but also provide, but it also has a financing mechanism. So it's not like it's on the county, it's on the city. So my point being is, we need to, this is not appropriate. The consultants recommended this, and, you know, obviously, I think it's not, it's known that we've had a little bit of change, and that's why there's been some, you know, Patrick stepped in, you know, to try to pick up the ball from where, you know, the lead project person was handling this.
But this is kind of an example of one of those unintended consequences, you understand?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we have right before us, right now, a huge portion of our county that is talking about annexing into Felsmere. And we have another huge portion that is going to annex into Sebastian. And is the county going to take that hit? Yes, definitely.
And the bigger question is, when you look at Chapter 171, specifically the annexation laws, they're, you know, absent, you know, them not following procedure and being able to demonstrate they can provide urban services, there's not much the county can do. So I mean, I just, in fairness, so you've just got to be mindful of that.
And I don't think we have any interlocal agreement with Felsmere, right?
Sebastian, or Sebastian mainly.
Right.
Yeah.
So, Bob, I know where you're going.
Well, and that's what's really confusing about this whole EAR, is that you have all these documents, you have interlocals, and it is just mind-boggling.
But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, if this happened, and then it came before, all this has passed, and there's an issue, and the Board of County Commissioners go, "No, no, no, we don't want this. We have got to change this." Can they not do that?
So you mean-
After the fact or before the fact?
No, I'm talking about after the fact. This has gone to Tallahassee. It's been signed off, and it's up on the wall.
Right.
And then something comes along, going, "Wait a minute, this doesn't fit in our pattern." It comes to the B O C C, and they go, "Okay, we've got to change this. This wasn't right."
Certainly, to Ryan's point earlier, it's much easier to do that now. We had limitations on text amendments previously to, previous to the 2011 legislation. But now we don't.
I guess that's my point. You know, I mean, we have the, almost the entire northwest part of the county getting ready to annex into Felsmere, from Babcock West.
Hey, and it's scary to get on 95 and pull right off the ramp, and there you see the Felsmere city limits.
I see it. I see it. Look, I understand, you know.
Here's the question I have, though. I mean, in what we're discussing, I'm the developer, I have a certain set of rules, and now you're going to change them because you don't like what I'm doing.
Right.
And I don't mean it that way.
Well, that's what I'm looking at, because I'm looking down the road, and I know how those guys think.
I think when you start talking about development, you have LDRs, you have the comprehensive land use plan that's laid out there. These EARS obviously are the comprehensive plan. They're kind of the bible, but the LDRs are there that they have to abide by to be able to build. And all that kind of works in together. Am I, I mean, I'm old school, but I'm not that old.
So the EER really is the evaluation and appraisal of our comprehensive plan. And then based on the data that we, you know, going through policy by policy, looking at the state statute, what's changed, and then looking at our, you know, the population projections, and then looking at, you know, the data analysis, recommended certain changes. I mean, it's, I would submit that this is not a brand-new comp plan. There are some tweaks. There are some updating timeframes, but I don't see any, there's no big swing for the fence in writing a brand-new comp plan that undermines what was done back in 2008.
And you all worked hard on that, Bob, in 2008.
We worked very hard.
And I can tell you, sitting here in 2004, as you know, we were caught. We were hit with the growth-
Big time.
Yeah.
That's why we did it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Where was I?
La La Land.
Yeah, geez. Does anyone else want to speak specifically about the land development regulations? If not, I'll close the public hearing.
What about, you got a white boot? Regulation?
Do what? Fortunately, all I hear is this and not you guys.
Sorry.
I like that. Okay, seeing none. We're going to close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Lots of questions. Lots.
Boom, let it rip.
Better word for pizza.
If you're over three minutes, I might have the deputy. No, we don't have a deputy.
No, we don't have that rule.
That's right.
But I thought we were going to go through line by line, or just, I'll start with my list.
If you want to do that, go to the B O C C meeting and find out what their line by line-
I'm here now. Yeah. So, questions, I mean, I'm asking, which way you guys want to do it? I mean, I got a list of things. I'm sure other people have a list of things that we just want to go through. As we go through, then we can raise the issue, which I think is probably going to save some time, but that's my opinion. And I thought that's what staff wanted.
It's up to the board.
Sure, Chip, start.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Need to take a potty break?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to take a potty break?
I don't, but maybe-
Good, I'm good. I'm right here with you.
All right. Well, anybody else? Okay, let's just start page by page. First of all, I want to say that, you know, I do appreciate staff's and Kimley Horn's work that they've done to it, which is a lot, a lot of time, and I'm going to apologize because when this came for us before, I should have said something. I mean, it was, it was presented and rushed through. And that's my opinion, and I should have said something. But I do want to apologize for that, and like I said, if you want to wear a pizza. So, starting off, that I have, I'm trying to find it now, but there's the requirement of the set aside for schools that we have. Have we had any development be used for a new school? To my knowledge, we haven't.
Do you have a page in policy or?
Well, it's, yeah, I'm going to, set aside for schools. Yeah, now, let me find it. I'm sorry, guys. Oh, well, it started in like page, well, my page seven, Policy 1.30, starting off the beginning where it talks about the commercial land use, and then it talks about magnet retail uses, where they're talking about, you know, set asides for schools, parks, yada, yada, yada. My point is that nobody's using this land that has been set aside. School system apparently doesn't want it or need it, and they've had a couple of opportunities. Why wouldn't there be a consideration at some point in time rather than setting aside the land? Let the developer pay for that land, and he can put houses on it.
Can I answer that maybe, Chip? Because I was a part of a lot of that when that property was set aside, and it was done a lot as a PD. It was stipulated that that property was going to be utilized and set for a school. Matter of fact, I think we've even done fire departments because growth is coming. I don't think the developers need more property to build houses on. That property is there, not in perpetuity, but it's there in case a school needs to be built.
Well, and that may be something else, that there is a timeframe, because I know several developers have complained that they had to set aside land.
I'm sure they're complaining.
They still set aside.
Sure. Mr. Chair, Mr. Lander. So generally speaking, around that same timeframe, again, was the 2004 boom. We also had an onslaught of student population.
Correct.
When we had the school district set asides, or school sites set asides, it was envisioned that the student population would increase and that we would need primarily elementary or K-38 schools, you know, in those same areas. What then unfolded was the Great Recession, and since that time, we've seen flat or declining enrollment in schools. We've also seen more recently the state remove the income limits for the step-up program, which allowed a ton of students to go to private schools. But to your point, Chip, typically, there is a 20-year reverter clause that if a property was set aside for a school and dedicated to the school district, it would revert to the county. The request for the developer to be able to purchase it back and develop it would kind of undo the benefit that they provided.
Which is, and I guess my question to that-
Also, to that point, they more often than not would calculate their overall density, including that school site, and move that density into their development area, so they would be potentially double-dipping on density.
There wouldn't be a loss of development rights by them. Let's use Waterway Village. There you go. 49th Street, you've got that property out there in front of it for a school. We're currently talking with the school district right now. They're not going to, you know, when you look at the proximity to other schools, they're not. So we are looking at the possibility of, you know, trying to see, can we, it does say it's going to go to a park, the board could change that. And is there an opportunity for a mixed-income, you know, development there? You know, that, you know, the school district's like, well, can you, will you set aside some potentially for teachers, units, or for public servants, or for, you know? So anyway, so I hear, are you talking specifically on page seven, the bottom one, it says number four, public facilities, including schools, fire, police stations, cultural and community facilities, and places of worship?
Yeah, yes.
That's specific, yeah, that's Newtown, yeah.
Newtown, yeah.
So I guess my question to you then, if that's said included but not limited to, is that, is that provide, you know, so if one of the-
It raised the issue that I have heard from people, you know, on the development side that are, why am I setting aside the land and never use it? I'll pay to, I mean, we allow developers to pay for wetlands and uplands and everything else. I'll give you the money, give it to the school board, and let them use it if that's what you want to do. Or set it aside, not just for the school district, but also for affordable housing.
That's a good comment. We can present, we'll present that to the board.
It has to be a-
Yeah, I mean, yeah, sure. I mean, it has to be a public benefit, but yeah.
That's why all of them do include reverter clauses, Mr. Sweeney was talking about. Includes public benefit, like the Waterway Village comes back to us, it must be used for parks or some other recreation purpose.
And the other thing I would add, sir, is the, this is a part of a PD project. If you recall, both the planning and zoning and the board are going to be taking up the PD process, the criteria coming forward, so maybe that might necessitate future changes based on what comes about between the joint meeting with you and the board on, you know, future PDs.
And I think you had the same thing at Point West, if I'm not mistaken. Didn't they have properties set aside?
There is. Still sitting there.
Still sitting there, yeah.
And the developer thought he had a school coming there. The school district decided they didn't want to put it there. And why did I hold that off for 20 years, or however long it was? Probably 20 years at least. Question. So, and I don't want to dominate the time, so I'll try to be quick as possible, but let's see, 5.4 came through.
What page, sir?
Well, my page 13, the policy, I'm still on the county, you know, with the LDRs, it's policy 5.4, talking about accessory residential uses within commercial areas for mixed development. What is that? What are we allowing or saying we're going to allow?
That's just clarifying that you can't provide a predominant residential use within commercial areas, meaning that the current code section is that residence, multifamily residential is allowed within commercial, but it needs to be accessory too, meaning less than, the predominant use needs to be commercial. But it's-
Give me an example, because I can't think of anything.
Well, I mean, I get, you could have a business that has a garage that has a accessory, you know, like a small apartment above it, and it's actually one of the, if you look at Live Local, and you look at some of the other direction coming out of Tallahassee, is like, well, that would be considered affordable housing, you know, if you would, you know, arguably speaking. So it's like you're opening the door or recognizing that there is, I mean, throughout the county, maybe some places where you do have businesses, and they, you know, I mean, I can think of this place out of 69th. I think in the barn, there's upstairs is the residential.
Well, and that's something that may be a retrofit too, though. Maybe. I don't know. I mean, a lot of people may not even be aware of that. For affordable housing, I mean, because that's, you know, I mean, that's where a lot of this is coming from, because it's a huge, huge issue, and we're not doing, I mean, we're trying to do something, but monetarily, it's just not happening. and we're not doing, I mean, we're trying to do something, but monetarily, it's just not happening. 6.0, it talks about the 125,000 acres that we're supposed to have in agricultural. Where are we at with that, right now? How much of our total acreage, I mean, how much of it is unincorporated agricultural?
I will have to look at the analysis, total acreage. I don't have the number readily.
The next one I have marked here, it's bad when you can't even read your own handwriting, but that's okay. What is, I mean, what inter-local agreements do we have? Because, I mean, developers just go to the path of least resistance. I mean, whether it's Sebastian or Felsmer or wherever, but we're still supposed to supply the utilities. Do we have any inter-local agreements?
So, we do have the 1995 interlocal agreement related to the provision of wastewater, water and wastewater with the city of Sebastian, because we purchased their, we defeased their debt and took over their system. And so, we have obligations, you know, there's responsibilities and requirements on both parties as it relates to the expansion and provision of services. And as I mentioned before, the only one that came to mind, like the Graves property, they have, when they approved that development, they, after they annexed it, they said, well, it's, it's subject to, that they have to have onsite sewer. They can't have like, you know, I mean, they have to have offsite, they can't have septic there. So, they have to work with us. But I will tell you, we did receive some comments both from Orchid, and then Sebastian, and I asked, I'm like, is there an interest of still moving forward and trying to see if we can take another shot at, you know, the inter-service, you know, inter-local service boundary agreement, or a joint planning agreement? And the city of Sebastian, they said that they would be willing to talk about it. I'm not saying that they're committing to it, but they're saying they're willing to talk. I mean, it's, I think it's in the best interest of the county to still provide that, but before, I think the language was, you know, it just said will, or she could say shall. So, we're gonna continue, because you're gonna have to have, you have to have two people that are willing to dance in order to come up with the agreement.
I understand. And then the consistency is beneficial to a businessperson as well, knowing the rules are all the same, or similar too. But when I know that I can go over to Sebastian or Felsmer, and it's easier to get done what I want done, because we do have a reputation as being difficult to deal with.
Or?
Development. We have that reputation, I mean, they go to, I mean, I hear it all the time. Whatever that may be, why that may be, I don't know, but, you know, I'd rather have more control over it and let them get annexed in, and then we still have to pay for it. Okay. Page seven.
Just, when you say we have to pay for it, you're talking about the utilities?
As tax, yeah, as tax.
So, with that specific I L A, I'll just tell you, they have already provided authorization for assessment for any utility. So, the taxpayers will not be paying for the expansion.
So, a C D D or something like that.
Yeah, they would be doing assessments if you, well, I don't think there's a C D D proof of that. The only one I know of is Liberty Park.
As well. Okay, under the sanitary sewer element, very minor, but since I get yelled at all the time for the same thing. The last part of the paragraph says the infrastructure element is the sanitary were sub-element?
Which one?
Is that something I don't know about, or is it just typo?
What policy is that, sir?
The last sentence of the opening paragraph.
Yeah.
It's a typo, and honestly, it's pulled from the current complaint, so it wasn't, it's been in there for quite some time.
Okay.
It's a new sub-element.
Yeah. And 1.1's been addressed because of municipalities, as far as that goes. And then the page 18, 2.6, let me get there myself, talks about the septic sewer, which that led into the financing, because, and I don't know everything, and I really don't want to, but I know it comes to a cost at some point in time, that if I have an existing sewer system, or septic system, excuse me, and you tell me, when do I have to upgrade it? Because mine's failed at that point in time, then I have to upgrade it?
Well, the state says as of right now, yes. No, no, the state, if your system fails right now, you have to put the new system in.
And that's, it's okay, but not come 2030, I've got to upgrade it, and who's gonna pay for it? That's...
That's the big conversations being had in the community, is, you know, because right now, the state's saying, it's on the own, if they can't connect to a central sewer system, then they have to install the new enhanced nutrient removal, reducing septic system.
Well, I think I've seen where one of the septic companies is offering financing now, so that might help out. I'm not making it up, it's pretty smart on their part.
Their business model.
Yeah, well, that's, you know. Page 22 on mine, which is the public water, potable water sub-element. That's 1.5, is it? Where they, the reduction down, 1.3, excuse me, again, I can't read my own handwriting. Where the potable water level of service was 250 gallons, is 250 gallons?
Per E R U, yes.
Per E R U.
Which means that's one house.
Basically.
Yes.
But there's another level there of the individual uses of 140, I think is what I saw, 104 gallons?
104.
So, if you multiply the per capita, or the number of residents, per half, yeah, so roughly comes out to 250. But it's a little bit less than that.
And then page 25, there was a notation on here about the county would be able to limit the number of permits issued for the number of new wells. But if you don't have water available, and I have acreage, how can you deny me putting a well in?
So, it just, we, so this is objective seven on page 25. We removed the hard and fast number of 300. Because again, we can't, when we get to 301, say, I mean, in theory, per that, we could, but I don't think we're gonna stand a chance legally.
But in this, with what's changed, you can limit the number of permits whenever you want. You decide arbitrarily when you want to limit it, instead of a number.
I don't know that we can legally do that.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I take things literally.
So, just as, off, I mean, so are you saying maybe the policies say the county will discourage the number of permits?
They could, they could, sure.
Versus limit?
Unless you got county water, you can't do it.
I'm just trying to, I mean, I understand what you're saying, we had a hard, fast number there before. I don't know if we, I don't know honestly if it's been tracked and monitored.
Currently, there is a very reasonable situation. But in 04, 05, when we're looking at a county moratorium on any building, it can go another way.
And we didn't do the moratorium, though.
No, but even when it was raised, I mean, even being raised, so. It's a question, but it's a concern too. And then paragraph, page 26, objective 10, water supply planning, and I don't believe everything are reading the paper, but when they're talking about the South County Initiative, I mean, do we have enough water for all of that down there? As approved?
So, what I would tell you is, and the opening paragraph, the county show, it's as required by floor statutes. We are required to do water supply planning, and we are in the process, now, when I say the process, the $3 million work order has already been, you know, RFPs and issued, and they are probably about, maybe about a year into the process of developing an integrated water master plan. So, this is just reflecting some of the requirements that the statute, the legislature, the state has said that you need to do this to appropriately manage the water resources. To your point earlier, like, what's the capacity now? I mean, we do monitor it, and we know what we have, you know, like, I think the U S B hearing said, we got enough water for the future projected population at medium, as well as land area.
But it's 17,000, I think, the number of units, but if you have 16,000 in one location, you have a problem.
They are geospatially limited, that is absolutely true.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Lander, to the point of the article that you're referencing, the title of which is inflammatory and not accurate, the only two project, the one project that is actually under construction, Lake Southwest, 201 units, and Emerson Oaks, which is very near, which is another 176 units. Yes, we absolutely have capacity for those two. Those have been vetted, concurrency, capacity check, U C P, every, everything. The other ones?
On the west side of 43rd.
Correct, both of those are on the west.
But you have a project on the east side of 43rd that goes all the way to 27th.
That, that's true, and that, they run the risk of not having capacity.
And that was a tool that was used back in 04, 05 with traffic, to stop.
It's, and it's still, concurrency management still exists today. They would have to, to be quite honest, come to the table and work with the county to demonstrate, or to, you know, provide sufficient improvements to enhance capacity.
Chip, can I ask one, just along those lines? I think, just for clarification, I'm pretty sure one of my very first meetings, I had a similar question on water. My, my understanding was, Ryan, you answered me, and basically said, if a, if a project comes to us, you guys have already done that work, and you're already telling us, yes, you've got the, that the water is available, that it's there to beat it.
That's correct, at the granular level, when you get to the site plan subdivision, P D, yes. Now, that being said, they don't actually vest the capacity until they pay the fees and the...
And there's the concern, because you've got these paper subdivisions out there that have all had capacity, but then the new guy comes in, and do you have capacity or not? Because they haven't paid their traffic fees.
Well, that's, that's the essence, because you could have somebody getting something entitled, and if they don't put money down on the table to reserve that capacity, and then you have somebody came in, comes in, they lay money down, and to reserve the capacity, then they build their infrastructure, then they're gonna proceed.
The counter argument is somebody that has 20, oh, Susan, are you chiming in?
Yeah, sorry, really quick, just on the Platts, usually, I can tell you, we flat out tell them that they're not necessarily guaranteed capacity. We don't ever guarantee them capacity, that's, I just want to at least lay that out there, because I think that, it sounds like that's one of the concerns, sorry, guys.
Well, unless they pay for those fees, and I know in the past, I think Waterway and a couple other places, prepaid for a lot of fees, to make sure. So, I guess we do, they're right, because they're in place, but, I mean, a paper subdivision, you can go out and prepay for those fees as well, if there's concern.
And we do track, I will tell you, when I look at the capacity reports, we do track what we are currently providing, and what's actually reserved. In other words, they've paid for it. So, I mean, and there's still water available. Just, matter of fact, we just got a 2 billion gallon day expansion of our cup. Well, about, less than a year ago, somewhere around there.
And if they don't know, they really should be told, when you prepay for the water and sewer impact fees, you get a bill every month thereafter for the waste water charges.
Trust me, I've heard this from...
And Chip, was that, wasn't that one of our issues back when the wheels fell off of America, that a lot of these subdivisions came in, they prepaid their impact fees to guarantee their deal? And then?
They found out.
The commissioners had to come in and figure out how to clean that mess up at that time, and that is a concern.
I think it's really when they get their C O.
No, they get account, once they create accounts, they get a monthly minimum account charge.
They don't do it until the C O now.
It is. I worked in a subdivision where that was not the case, but that's a few years ago.
There's the multifamily down here, you know, and I was like, why didn't you get a master meter? You know, like, they are paying, and it just...
So, the new rule, the rule now is, once you get a C O, not...
I'll verify, I thought that was the case, because I know I...
But it's allowable per state statute, we currently still collect that building permit, but that's been discussed.
Okay, all right. Because that was a nice 70 lots, at 15 bucks a lot for ad infinitum, and for a piece of acre land.
Crazy, I mean...
Okay, well, been there and lived it. Sorry. Page 33, 2.5, sorry, guys. Oh, yeah, the county, the county will require, promote, or will promote the use of wet retention ponds for irrigation to maximize, which a lot of the subdivisions, I think it's almost a standard now, isn't it?
Which page is it?
I have, well, my page 33, it's policy 2.5, where the county will promote the use of wet detention, retention ponds.
32 for us.
Oh, stormwater or objective?
Page 32, it says stormwater. Natural groundwater, rather, sub-element, yes. 2.5.
For irrigation to maximize the beneficial use of stormwater runoff irrigation.
Right, it is standard practice, but it's not a requirement. You are still allowed to get a irrigation well. It, there's a multitude of variables that come into play with the stormwater, that sometimes there's not enough to stormwater harvest.
Okay, and I've heard complaints about the additional requirements now for drainage and so forth, but if you can use it for sprinkler systems, you can't run through the sprinklers anymore, though, apparently. That's not a good idea, or, you know, well, you could, but, just, sorry. And that's probably the best thing I've seen in this whole document here, is, I mean, for saving water. I mean, and it's just gonna go right back in the pond eventually. You know, just dig the pond deeper, I guess, if you could do that, but I don't know.
It's one of the mosquito control requirements.
You hit the water table.
Yeah. Little fish in there.
And to John's point earlier about the, you know, the other, the reuse, I mean, primarily reuse would also be a source of irrigation. The trickiness with that is it has to be a separate pond, they are not allowed to intermix with the stormwater. So, it'd have to be a separate lined pond for reuse.
Why couldn't it be?
It'd speak rules.
Well, so change the rule, I mean, why couldn't you use it? You're draining into it, it's gonna fill.
No, 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 so the stormwater ponds can potentially outfall eventually, whereas we wouldn't want the reuse to outfall, it would have to stay entirely on site.
But if you use it for a sprinkler system, it stays on site.
Chip?
Sir?
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, John and Ryan, all these rules that are put out here, they're set in place, at some point in time, they can be changed.
Absolutely.
Up to the county commission meeting.
Up to the county commission.
So, I'm asking now.
So, no matter what you ask now, they could always change it.
Sure.
So...
I can quit doing this and go to the county commission meeting and do the same thing, but I'm asking the question.
And that's the reason I really didn't... That's the reason I really didn't dig that deep into this, because it's, maybe it's my job, but it's not. Because they have the ultimate goal of what they need to do, and even if they don't see something, they don't change. And 10 years down the road, something comes up, that current board of county commission will go, no, we don't like this. We gotta, we gotta change this. See what I'm saying?
I understand, but I mean, then what are we here for? I mean, if we're just, if we might as well rubber stamp it then, if we're, if...
No, no, this isn't, this isn't a rubber stamp.
So, just help me, so when you say, so what is it you're looking at when you look at 2.6? So, I understand, you want to see, you got it?
2.5.
Uh, 2.5, sorry, I had 2.6 highlighted, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, the wet, you want to be able to, you want a developer, or the, we'll just say a subdivision, to be able to use their wet retention area to pull for reuse?
For reuse water, instead of running, instead of sinking a new well, like Point West is, everyone has a well that goes dry eventually, because I've already paid for one.
So, I did let our natural resources and utilities directors go, because we...
Yeah, I understand.
We'll follow up with them on that, and bring it, bring it forward.
Point West isn't on, they're not on sewer?
No, no, they're on sewer, but your sprinkler systems are on a separate well.
Well, I know that St. John's encourages the use of recycling your stormwater retention into yards, and it's one of those things that the phosphates go in there, they like it to go back on the yard where it was originally, and those kinds of things. However, that's not a possibility when you have something that's not on that particular retention pond to do that, just because of right-ofways and easements, and those kinds of things, to pull from that, to irrigate the other side of the street. So, I'm not sure why this is coming up, if St. John's already encourages that at this point. But it's not mandatory.
The current policy requires it, which is overly burdensome, because there are cases to Mr. Votol's point, that it simply can't be done. The reality of it is, in order to meet the new nutrient loading requirements, it's almost a default to use what they call stormwater harvesting, which is using the water from the air... water from the irrigation ponds. However, depending on a multitude of different variables, the size of the pond, the depth, the, the, that may not be enough water for irrigation. It is by default nowadays, the primary source, but we can't.
You can't.
We don't want to require it in, in the instance that it doesn't work.
I'm getting there, guys, sorry. Yeah, page thirty-five, this is talking about flood elevations, and there was a change on here that we're no longer requiring the six, six inches above the base flood level, where I thought we were doing that primarily to get the discounts on flood insurance, or is that all changed? Because now if we're not the six inches above, uh, my page thirty-five, and it's like one point two.
Yeah, I'm watching, I'm seeing you.
Eighty zone structures must be elevated to minimum six inches, that's all been wiped out. Now it's just a hundred year storm event, but that's the flood level, not above the flood level. So do we lose those discounts now for flood insurance? It's expensive enough as it is, and it's getting worse. I don't, I don't know. That's what I was always told why we had to do that.
So the, the specific free, so the free board can differentiate among the, so the, the current, the current way it's written is a little bit too specific in that it, it, it specifies the zones, um, so it has to accommodate the hundred year, and then it does say, uh, with any required appropriate free board protection, and then it defaults to the flood insurance rate maps. We can, we can double check with.
Yeah, Kyle, yeah, we will.
Make sure it's, it's.
Good comment, thank you, sir.
Is that not also, uh, in the LDRs and, and building codes?
I think it is, I think it is.
So we, again, we, you don't want to be so specific in that you actually limit the, the ability to adjust the free board to be higher? If that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I just, when it's out, again, I'm literal, sorry.
Sure.
Um, and page thirty-seven, the stormwater utilities. Where is it in here? Something regarding my concern as to a possible impact fee. Looking here. My page thirty-seven, so it's one of three point four, four, six point one. Uh, with this, yeah, right at the top, three point four, by twenty thirty, with the stormwater master plan.
That's our page thirty-six.
Yeah, it's. So thirty-six, or thirty-six for you, yeah, it's policy three point four, where you've changed the date from twenty twelve to twenty thirty. And then it refers to, the county shall consider establishing a stormwater utility to fund maintenance and improvements of existing stormwater management facilities. Do we not already have an impact fee for that, or is that something?
We do not have a stormwater.
But it could be instituted. That's what I thought.
We're very close with the stormwater.
This is not a stormwater impact fee, this is a utility fee, uh, and just, there's a difference. It would be like every property owner pays it on an annual basis. So, now I will tell you, it's, it is in the stormwater management plan that is getting ready to be presented to the board, but it's not recommending, it's identifying it as a potential revenue source, you know, because there's like eighty-nine million dollars of projects, you know, for stormwater. So, uh, you know, if you ask me, John, you know, as a county administrator, would you recommend that? Right now, no, but what happens if the legislature e- eviscerates or limits our, our, our taxing ability and you still have to provide for stormwater management? So then maybe that, that's what, you know, City of Vera Beach has it, many other communities have it, but right now.
And it hasn't, it started here and it's now here.
Yeah, so.
Now it's getting kicked around on the, on the amount of impervious land in an area and being, you know.
Yes, exactly, they evaluate your, your, the amount of pervious, impervious land that you have, and there's a base rate, and then, and so it's, it's, it's very scientific, it's not just, you know, arbitrary, you know? I've been through one before, it's not arbitrary, it's, it's very scientific, and you're right, it's based on pervious for the most part.
Okay. Um, my page thirty-eight, seven point seven, talks about where practical to expand the sewer, uh, lines is referred to, let's see. Yeah, something else says county shall work towards the elimination of all points of pollution from private sewer plants and septic contributing water, and then it goes on further, where practical continue to expand sanitary service within the urban service area, but unless it's a developer, we're not running any water lines or sewer lines, correct? Not now.
No, there, there are certainly county utilities projects.
Yeah, Twentieth Avenue.
It's on the list.
Alright, so I gave.
But I'm not going to tell you how far down.
I'll be going down.
I just want to say I'm not annoyed, uh, Chip, with this process, because, you know, you mentioned George Hamner had some concerns, that, I, I'm in his seat, and I, it, I do have some qualms about rubber stamping something that I haven't really been very engaged in. And, and I do think it then, and it leaves open to some finger pointing when the board can say, well, well, planning and zoning, you guys, you guys have a chance to.
Yeah, we didn't do our job on the twenty-sixth of June.
Well, that's basically what we were told, which.
Well, you're not supposed to really do what you're told, but.
Generally don't, but, I mean, I can't complain when I realize I.
Remind me next month, I'm gonna be absent. No, I'm just teasing. But I, Bob touches on, and Jordan truthfully, things, things have changed a lot, and we were caught in the storm, and we lived that.
Yeah.
I'm still amazed, and, and we're still archaic on a lot of this stuff. So Chip, I do commend you.
Yeah. Hey, if I had to read through the eighty something pages I read through, then I, I appreciate all the work that was done.
You don't have questions up to eighty something, do you?
I've gone through all eighty two pages.
Keep going, Chip, I like it.
No, no, I just got, I've got something else to do, like life.
You're staying right there, but, go ahead.
I'm just going to say it's only eight eleven.
I don't have a real estate license.
I think we have till eleven o'clock, don't we?
Hey, that's, that's, that's your problem.
This is easy.
That's your problem.
You keep going, Chip.
I was in the peanut gallery then, so I couldn't.
You're the stray cat there, Tommy.
Okay. He didn't hear out of that ear, remember?
I know, he can't hear me.
Hey, um, on page thirty-nine, it talks about the level of services, and it refers to level of service D shall be maintained. With the exception of the following two, which will be a level of service E.
T plus.
Policy one point one, I'm sorry, page, my page, so Twenty-seventh Avenue, South County Line to State Road sixty, we can't do anything about that, it's a state road now.
The Twenty-seventh Avenue, the north south, is a county road. Twenty-seventh Avenue?
That's county road.
County road, Twenty-seventh?
I thought part of it had become state because they were going to be responsible for all the work and, no?
No, no.
That's still our bill.
So, so Twenty-seventh Avenue, Forty-third Avenue, I, I mean.
Any roads.
Or what it's worth, or whether you want to call it the O'Brien Rule or what, but those are not intended to be widened to, to meet that level of service.
Is that the O'Brien? Well, we, we're supposed to do Forty-third back in oh four, oh five, and it got shot down to shut development down.
In oh four and oh five, it was supposed to be widened, but within the constraints of not taking property.
Right.
Maybe O'Brien after six decided to make the O'Brien Rule. Oh, Chip.
No comment. Page forty-one, moving along here, something about mobility, planning approach, yeah. Pol, new policy one point seven.
Seven.
What is a moti, what is a mobility planning approach?
Mobility planning is the notion that you don't just plan for cars, you also plan for pedestrians, you've planned for alternative vehicles like golf carts, uh, the, you know, bikes, uh, and it's, it's, some communities are looking at that as a way to say, listen, we have to make transportation improvements, because right now your transportation impact fees can only be spent on expanding and creating opportunities, additional capacity for roads. Mobility planning, if you go to transfer, transit to a mobility fee, then you have more opportunities. And people have used it for greenways to create like, you know, like just, the, the, from like Felsmer Road away to Sebastian, where you could not use impact fees for that. So it, it's, it's, it provides more flexibility, it's, it's a new evolving, I would say, transportation tool in the last five years, but it's really getting a lot more traction in the last couple years throughout the state. And the, the legislature has actually, uh, made some changes to concurrency management as it relates to how you treat trans, I mean, you, you give equal weight to mobility fees as you do transportation impact fees, but with more flexibility.
Well, one of your planner emeritus, I can't remember if Mr. Bollinger, um, Mr. Keating, they were concerned way back when about, um, self-driving vehicles, and that increasing the number of cars that are on the roads, and I have a self-driving vehicle, which means you guys are a lot safer than me driving, but, I mean, like, so that, that was a question, so, alright, moving along.
And, and what that merely implies, and I'm not saying, you know, uh, the county will study and consider mobility planning, is it a better approach for our county? Does it meet the needs of our county? Is it appropriate? I mean, there, there are other communities that have done it, and there are others, I, I.
I hope you don't allow more areas to have golf carts, because they don't follow the rules and.
They have like, they take, they, they put roads in a diet and they take dedicated lanes, so they're multi-use vehicles, you know, and stuff like that.
Okay, page forty-three, job housing balance. That's one I've never heard of before. Where is that? And I have page forty-three, job housing balance. Oh yeah, objective eight. By twenty forty-five, all three geographic sub-areas of Indian River County will have a jobs housing balance. What is it? I've never heard that before.
It's forty-two on for us.
Yes, so essentially what the jobs housing balance is, jobs housing balance is, as you create opportunities for more jobs, you need to make sure you have sufficient enough housing that, you know, arguably that's affordable for that. And then there, there, there's a kind of like a symbiotic relationship, if you think about it. You could bring in a plant, but if you don't have enough ja, or housing for those workers, you know, or manufact, clean manufacturing facility, but you don't have enough housing for them, I mean, housing, the, the, just for pure economic development, I can tell you the site selectors and the companies are going to want to make sure that there's available housing for their workers.
Well, we don't have it, so we're not going to get those people. And then we definitely don't have it where it's even remotely affordable, so I don't know where we sit in those numbers, but I would expect we're above those. Page forty-four, objective two, it says, we, we, objective two, between twenty twenty-five and twenty forty-five, will increase the number of jobs in the county's new high wage mark. Target industries by a thousand.
You have a self-driving car, it's going to happen.
Somebody's got to work on them, I guess, but, I mean.
So what I, I would, I would tell, I would share with the board, you know, the county's currently in the final stages, meaning like we have a draft that's being reviewed for an economic strategic action plan, that's going to identify, right now the county identifies any qualified targeted industry as, oh, any qualified target industry listed by the state. So what we're trying to do is find out what are the QTIs, if you will, that are specific to, you know, that would complement and not overrun the county in terms of growth, but what, what industries and what businesses should we be recruiting, you know, that will position our local economy and, you know, to our point earlier about, you know, the, even jobs housing balance, but also like, you know, trying to bring back, you know, Jane and John Doe, they go off to college and like, eh, they're like, there's really not much to go back to, you know, but, oh wait, now there is. So, I mean, we do have an economic development strategic action plan, and, and what I would tell you is, uh, we did hire, brought into the county this year, just hired them, actually been here what, a month?
Oh, right about.
Yeah, right about a month, an, an economic development manager. We previously, you know, the chamber was doing that, we bifurcated the responsibilities to where we're going to work collaboratively, because we think we, we can have, we can do some stuff internally, and then they can do some stuff externally. So I, I think you're going to see a more of a, a targeted approach to, to, uh, economic development than in the past. I'll just say that. I mean, there was, there was a study done in twenty fifteen that they're telling us probably sat on the shelf.
And then we've said that for forty years now, and we seem to have a problem with that, but, um, sorry, that's, I shouldn't have said that. And if I offend anybody, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, but I don't have a filter sometimes. Page forty-four, objective two, okay, that's done. Page forty-eight, see, I'm moving along, Calvin.
Yeah, I just don't know how many pages you got listed there.
He's asleep.
I only have a page and a half left, out of four pages. Hey, I'm probably not going to be invited back, so that's okay, you know, you can get my chance.
We'll make sure all the commissioners are here at the next meeting.
Ryan, will you send that letter out tomorrow that, make sure we have a quorum?
Well, um, page forty-eight, county regulations, estimated cost and review by planning and zoning and A-hack.
Which policy?
Page forty-eight, policy. Got to be one point eight then.
The county shall expedite permits review for the following types of residential projects?
That was one of them, but yeah, I mean, who do we have that takes advantage of those expedited permit reviews? Who have we had?
Affordable housing. Affordable housing.
Who have we had?
Habitat for Humanity.
Habitat's it, right?
No, there's other nonprofit developers.
But primarily Habitat.
Yeah. And, and there's other for-profit that are willing to, to develop at a lower, you know, we have to attract them, but, but they're willing to develop a lower range, you know, house, you know, that, that's designed for affordable housing, lower price, which means doesn't.
Workforce, yeah.
Yeah, workforce housing, yes.
Which is our police officers and teachers who are all living, uh, two families at a time right now, at least in a lot of cases that I've seen. Page fifty, how many people have used these density bonuses? So it's like two point five. My page fifty, so you're fifty-one.
Page forty-nine for us.
Yeah.
Uh, we've had, not a lot, but we have had a ton of interest. Nobody's gotten across the finish line. Probably had five, six, seven conversations with different folks about the density bonus.
Why have they?
The economics is tough to make it work.
Maybe make it easier economically then.
I thought, you want me to, I'm talking about national economics.
Oh, you're talking about national, I'm just worried about county.
Right.
You have something about it, Ryan.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ryan.
I'm on affordable housing, and it's, it's a major stumbling block right off the bat.
But I think this, what I will say is, I think this is a tool, if, you know, if, if live local comes to, you know, realizes its, its vision and its, its, what's they believe will happen, this could be a tool that we have to enable that.
Okay. Page fifty-two, Calvin.
Proud of you, brother.
Thank you. Policy nine point two, oh, interlocal agreements, let's move on. Page fifty-three, we're now in the conservation elements, and I don't know if this is something that has to be done at statewide level or can be done locally, but, um, the fines, it's a price of doing business. I'll clear out the mangroves, I can have them out, cleared out, have my half million dollar, million dollar lots, and I'll pay the fine. Make the fines higher.
Yeah, that's, while we have, do environmental enforcement, really we get involved, we get the state involved because they have much bigger teeth on this issue.
Or you can't get a building permit.
Well, as the last couple, the one that was most recently, you know, dominated the papers, it wasn't about the building permit, it was just, they, they, they went beyond the scope of what they were supposed to go.
Allegedly.
Allegedly, I don't, it's, they, the due process.
Somebody misunderstood. Okay.
Self-driving mower.
Page fifty-seven, as I'm really, I apologize, but that, I think that's why we're here, so. Page fifty-seven, the buffer zone.
Policy number.
I got five point five. Yeah, we do like the fee and lieu all the time. We, we have started seeing here, and I've started seeing it in my business in real estate, that there are subdivisions that South Florida primarily, I can't, but primarily, it's not local people, I can tell you that, that the lots are getting smaller, and there's no room left for anything but the house.
We just had that.
I know, and you got, you got your hand, well.
No, we didn't, we had it handed to them.
I know you did, and I know, before that, we had another project.
I wasn't here then.
I got my, well, yeah, you can't claim responsibility, but I got my hand slapped, because it followed all the rules, but you had a four-foot wide lot, and a thirty-foot wide house, and.
Rules weren't there?
Well, they followed the rules.
You'll know that as a former county commissioner, rule wouldn't there?
Yeah.
And the county commissioners will learn, if they want to be a PD, they can institute anything they want to on that.
That's one of the reasons we're having.
It's one of the reasons we're having the meeting with the BCC is, is to clarify some of that for us.
The PD process.
And, and get that process either changed or, or clarified.
I see both sides of it, but I mean, I, you know, I'm here, and I was here, and we get new people moving in, but developers, it's density, 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 sorry, that's it, and unless you can do something about that, otherwise, if they could pay whatever, you know, trees sell, wetlands sell.
Chip, I might be wrong, but Ryan, didn't that kind of send a little quiver to some of the developers?
More than a quiver.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Yes, it did.
It worked.
It did.
For one builder.
No, 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 it worked.
Okay, good. All right, well, that's good.
They're going to come here with their A game and not their D game.
The comment that night was, it's acceptable practice, we do it in Port St. Lucie all day.
Yeah, yes, I remember.
Well, that wasn't a reason, though, it was what was allowable. Well, we're getting off case here, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and I'm almost done. Uh, page sixty, page sixty was something about the gopher tortoises, seven point ten.
Lightning rail.
It's about seventy-five hundred to ten thousand dollars a turtle now, tortoise.
To eat?
That's free, but you don't want to, they don't do that anymore, back when you were young, they probably did, but.
You're not in the Loudre family.
But it refers to something about the county supplying land. Page sixty-seven point.
Right, to establish a state certified recipient site.
Have we done that? As far as I know, there's only one out, actually, that's filled out now, filled up.
It's down out of Okochobee now, out in, in that area, that there's another receptive.
That's in Okochobee.
That was supposed to be done by two thousand eleven, based on what you're saying, I don't know, maybe it has, but this is still establishing that the county will establish one or more.
Reception.
Moving forward, yes.
Yeah.
So continuing, continuing the policy, you know, we're not, it just, we eliminated the date.
But we don't have the land.
Not currently.
I don't know about that.
It might come from a PD.
Well, or, you know, it might, might be something through ELAB, you know?
Through what now?
Environmental lands acquisition program, when they do the land management program, there's twenty-five million dollars first tranche that they're acquiring land, and they might be able to, in the habitat management plan, create an opportunity for, to make a recipient site, and then there's another twenty-five million that the voters have voted for as well, so, I mean.
Well, there's plenty of dry uplands area with Palmetto's and all in the county that we could have a location and would be better for them, because they all got the communicable disease out west in Okochobee, which is not a good thing, wasn't like the villages. You can't make this stuff up, this is true, they, they did.
Chip, Chip just had a bunch of surgeries, he's on pain medication.
But it would make more sense if we relocated, all right.
Just would like to eat tonight, but I do have surgery tomorrow morning.
Okay, and page seventy, pep reef, why are we still dealing with that? Do we spend any money on it?
On what?
The pep reef.
Page seventy, policy.
Yeah, uh, policy, uh, four point, no, that can't be right, oh, wrong page, four point one zero, we're continuing to monitor, monitoring the pre, the pep reef.
Refabricated erosion prevention.
It, yeah.
Of policy four ten and sixty-eight.
Are we still spending money on that? Because it, I'm sorry, I'm not qualified to say this, but it didn't appear to do what it was supposed to do.
I thought it did, but it's in the city, isn't it?
Almost done.
The only change is spelling out what the abbreviation for.
They had the acronym, but they didn't have what the actual.
Right, it was, it was referenced by acronym, but it wasn't previous, it's not good practice to use an acronym without.
So, we will ask natural resources, have they, have we, are, have we, and are we continuing to do this?
And have we evaluated, did it do anything, or should we just remove the concrete barricades and not cause boating hazards? You hit one with your lower unit, you find out. I don't have a boat, I can't afford one, but.
I don't have a lower unit.
Okay, and last, but not least, page eighty-two, Calvin's purposes.
Cooking peanut oil.
Is my timer up?
Yep.
That gavel right there.
What is an enclave? Because we talk about not making sure it happens, and.
Buick.
Okay. So, so you have pockets and you have enclaves and annexations, it's in the state statue, and they define it. And an enclave is generally surrounded, and there's only like one piece of property that kind of like, you know, like maybe if you take a circle, like, you know.
It's not attached to.
It's, well, yeah, and there's just, it's, it's very limited, you know, where pockets, like, it could kind of be a little bit more, but the enclaves are, they're completely surrounded for the most part.
But we don't have any of those, we don't allow that anyways.
Well, state statute doesn't allow it, so if someone was to try to create an annexation, matter of fact, that was one of the bases, I think, that the, I forget who it was, that, you know, filed suit against, you know, the Graves Brothers, was that they were creating an enclave, but it really wasn't an enclave, because there was sufficient enough space.
Thank you.
Land between.
I appreciate your all's patience, this is probably be my last meeting.
Let me get my bill.
What patient?
Let's see, where are we? Commissioners, we get to make a decision.
About what?
About moving this forward for staff recommendation and changes.
Can't remember what we talked about.
We have a motion, can I have a second?
Second, and for discussion, we're going to the county commission and offer suggestions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign, passes unanimously. Thank you, staff, let's move in on, we have.
Thank you.
Commissioners matters, any issues? I got one, make sure we have a quorum next meeting.
No, it's not just a quorum.
You got to have.
Make sure Dr. Day is here and someone else, no.
You blame it on Dr. Day.
You did, no, you did it, did. Planning matters.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we, we will be having the September eleventh meeting.
September eleventh?
Yes, yes.
I'm not going to be here, I'm teasing.
Oh, Chip will be here then.
Oh, I've got a funeral that day. Have, when are you setting up the workshop? I know it was talked about.
What's that, sir?
The workshop with.
The board? Sometime in October.
The tenant will be scheduled for October twenty-third, it was, and it would be a night meeting, six PM, on your guys' schedule.
Here, in this building?
Yes, oh, yes, have not, that has not been finalized, so I'm very, on the, on the air right now, that's tentatively.
Oh, we won't have any detail.
Have them sit down there. Attorneys matters, Chris, welcome aboard. You don't have anything to say about this long, lengthy meeting?
Thank you, sir.
First and last.
I have a motion for adjournment.